I could get everyone's attention.
Yeah, yeah.
Take this opportunity to welcome everyone to our work session for our summer meeting at the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. We're glad everyone here could join us and want to offer my sincere thanks to my fellow commissioners for being here as well. The first order of business, I'll make some general comments. We do have two new board members that I want to recognize and give an opportunity to introduce themselves. First is Siri Kadir, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, is that right? And she's the new THEC student member. She's a student at the UT College of Medicine. Siri, if you wouldn't mind just telling us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, I'm Siri, like you said, and I'm a third-year medical student at UT HSC now. I went to Vanderbilt for undergraduate and have sort of always been interested in public policy and education. So that's kind of what brings me here.
Very much. Next, I want to introduce Mr. David Kustoff, who is an attorney from Memphis. He previously served, or maybe presently serves, on the University of Memphis Board of Visitors. And as I also know, he was the former U.S. Attorney for the Western District of Tennessee. Is that right, David?
That's exactly right, yeah.
If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself.
Yeah. I'm David Kustoff from Memphis, live in Germantown. And as the chairman said, I'm a lawyer, so that means I'm one of the good guys. Had the pleasure of serving the Department of Justice as United States Attorney for the Western District of Tennessee for a few years and appreciate the service that this commission gives to the state and honored to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, David. And finally, I want to recognize, well, not finally, but I do want to recognize Mr. Dennis Jones, who is a regular participant here at our quarterly meetings, and we're grateful for you traveling in and spending time with us. So thanks for being here. And finally, I'd like to recognize Dr., is it Elisa White? Is that right? Dr. Elisa White, who's president of Austin Peay State University. Thank you for being here. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Russ.
Great, thank you, Chairman Copeland. I want to note that in the notes, I asked him to say "anchor down" when he introduced Siri, and he did not do that. So as a fellow Vanderbilt alum, I apologize for that. I want to welcome everyone here today, too. Welcome back, Dennis. Feels like you're on the payroll and deserve an office upstairs. We'll try to get you one soon if we can.
Act rate goes up.
This is true. But today's chock full of some good material. What you will see today as we go forward with the agenda is the usual array of our statutory obligations for new academic program approval and post-secondary authorizations, things of that nature. But also, as Chairman Copeland and I were talking, the new next decade of master plan, funding formula, and quality assurance have been under development for the past six months or so, and they're before you for discussion today and for action tomorrow, of course. So this is really almost two agendas in one. There's some significant material that is here, so we look forward to talking through that with you. One sort of point of note about how this will proceed, we're going to go through in some gory details, some of the material today, particularly on the master plan, the funding formula, and quality assurance. Tomorrow morning, when we convene, the recommendation staff will make to the commission is for approval of those items, of course, but also permission to tweak these things and fine-tune as necessary, whether it be fine-tuning the language in the master plan or getting to some specific numbers that we've yet to get to on the funding formula. But just some housekeeping things that we'll ask your permission to have the authority to do after your approval. I do want to say off the top, before we get into the substance, to acknowledge and thank the campus leadership and system leadership for the work they've done in helping us craft and develop the master plan, the formula, quality assurance, all the things that we do. It would not be possible without their input and their feedback, and so we appreciate that from them. And from all the members across state government, across the private sector who help us with these matters, Patrick Meldrum and Claude Presnel are here from Takua. Appreciate their input as well. This really is a group effort, and without that, we could not do this. So today's overall framework, the first half of our work session, will really be focused on the master plan, the formula, and quality assurance. We'll spend the bulk of our time going and digging deeply into those three and some other agenda items on the latter half of the agenda today. I do, and the way this will be structured, and David Wright will start on the master plan, and then Betty Dandridge Johnson, her staff, and then me and others on the formula, kind of going through all the tools, but also trying to highlight where these things reinforce each other and where they're connected and how they manifest themselves in adult learner initiatives or in college access programs. Really, this framework is truly a structure for how Tennessee ought to approach higher ed these next 10 years and how we get to where we need to be as a state. So we'll go through those structures as well. Let me ask David to begin coming to the table, wherever there he is, to begin setup. And as a prelude to that, I want to ask Dennis for some overview comments. He's been intimately involved with the master plan, intimately involved with the development of a lot of the tools we have here, not just this cycle, but frankly, for almost two decades now, I suppose, perhaps more. So he's seen and experienced a lot and walked hand-in-hand with us through many of these, through these paths. So Dennis, do you have any sort of opening observations you'd like to make?
Just a couple. One, I'm asked in a lot of other states, you know, which state would I point to that I would say is getting it generally right? And I point to Tennessee, not because you're there yet, but Tennessee, more than any other state, has articulated a goal or a set of goals, has got very high-level buy-in to that set of goals and pushed behind them, and is lining up the tools at kind of all levels, finance, accountability, regulatory, you know, the whole set of activities, way that are designed to accomplish those goals than in any other state in the country. So, you know, having said that, you know, the master plan that you're about to see or talk about, I think, takes drive to 55 and the goal that is really kind of the anchor point for it and takes it the next step. It says, you know, how big is the gap? Who has to tackle that gap? What's the role of educating adults? So, you know, it gets a step down from the big 55 goal to some things that says implementing that is now got some framework around it and some framework that will drive the next set of policy steps. The funding formula is aligned with it, you know, there's a couple of tweaks to it, but it takes some of the reality that you have to emphasize and put some emphasis behind A thing that's not on this agenda and can't be yet, but, you know, there's been a summer-long or about how the capital part of the budget gets implemented, you know, the systems, Governor Stack, that are recommending with them. But, you know, that again is a real step forward, I think, in how one aligns funding with part of the budget process and summarize. In front of yourself. A lot of work to be done, including, you know, how do you think about paying for it? Which, you know, there's.
Thank you, Dennis, for that. Let me acknowledge, too, President Meredith Shirley Rains, who just walked in the room. Dr. Rains, thank you for being here with us today. That's a good segue to David's overview of the master plan. And by way of introduction, too, what's in the notebooks is really the heart of the observations and recommendations that have been developed for the past six months, David, I guess. The full plan with the introduction and the appendices is in draft form and will be sent out shortly, but what's in the notebook is focused on just that central heart of what the plan is and what it represents for how we go forward the next 10 years. So David, let me ask you to walk us through the master plan.
Thank you, Dr. Deaton, and welcome, new members, and nice to see everyone else again, members of the commission. First of all, before we begin, this has been a fluid process that got ever more fluid in the last week or so. So I'm actually going to be speaking from what you received in the mail-out was a version of the observations and recommendations that existed as of last Wednesday. The next day, we had a meeting of sort of a next-to-last once-over of the recommendations by the Master Planning Committee, and it got amplified somewhat. I don't say it was changed a lot. Anyway, the latest version is on the table behind you. That's what I'm going to be referring to in terms of page numbers and whatnot, so don't want to confuse things any farther, but if you want to have the latest, greatest version, it's there. And I'll say, in addition to that, we met again this morning for an hour and a half, and there was more discussion, but just to let you know that we will need some leeway as we sort of reflect everyone's comments in the final analysis of this. I, too, want to add my thanks to those that Dr. Deaton mentioned, to Dr. Di Pietro and Chancellor Morgan, and Dr. Claude Presnel, is he in the audience? Okay, hey, Claude, for their own participation through their designees and personal participation at times in it, as well as making their bright and dedicated and often much more insightful than myself staff, making those folks available to me. As we drafted this plan, also, I was able to sit in on the Funding Formula Review Committee, the Capital Task Force, meetings of the Articulation Transfer Council, and on and on, and all those things, of course, informed thinking behind the plan, as well as individual interviews with every member of the committee at some point in time. So that's kind of what went into the plan, as well as going to meetings at the state and national level to sort of know what's coming down the pike, what we're ahead on, what we're, the list isn't very long on what we're behind on, but so sort of the national context and Dennis's take on that informed the plan as well. Mr. Wilson, in our meeting earlier this morning, raised an issue that I want to just clarify before we go on, and that is the sense in which this is and is not a plan, a master plan in particular. If we were a governing board, it might look somewhat different, but we're a coordinating board, so the term "master plan" is in statute, and so I was hesitant to not call it that. But it's clear to me that some sort of verbiage in the document needs to be there that says it's a plan in the sense that this is a policy, agenda-setting document for the systems and sectors and the various players with which we interface. It is not an operational or even a strategic plan to the point that you start with goals and go to objectives and strategies and tactics and whatnot. There's probably some of that thinking that could be overlaid on this that might strengthen it and give it more urgency, and your comments have forced me to go back and think about how I might do that. But it has been and is, again, in its current form, more of a table setter for the work that is already going on, in many cases, in the systems and institutions, and in some cases, as Tristan Denly said this morning, waiting in the wings. Finally, I wanted to mention that this is a departure from other, certainly the past plan that I worked on, and I think it would be a true statement to say other THEC plans in that we generally adopt a five-year planning window for not only the master plan but also the funding formula and the now what's called Quality Assurance Funding Program, formerly Performance Funding. And I believe the funding formula and the Quality Assurance Committees worked under the assumption that these were their five-year plans. In reality, this plan that we're going to talk about today is going to need to be revisited at least every five years, probably more than that. But I wanted to put 2015 to 25 in the title and termed it editorialized, I guess, decade of decision, because 2025, 10 years from now, is the due date, if you will, on the drive to 55, the date by which we are to have achieved the governor's stated goal of having 55% of working-age adults who are Tennessee residents possessing a college degree or diploma certificate or other credential of labor market value. I just use a lot of terms that are not well-defined in all cases, but that's the goal. And so for that reason, this plan adopts, at least rhetorically, a 10-year window, and in doing so, is trying to communicate that it's going to require longer than five years, probably for us to reach the goal. It will require sustained effort over a long period of time beyond five years to do that. And I also like the fact that 2025 becomes the out year for this plan. It builds more accountability into the plan, I think, than to say, all this has to be done, you know, some year out in the future, we'll all be dead and gone by then, but at least we're headed in the right direction. But I don't know if we'll all still be working on our current jobs, but hopefully we'll be around to see the drive to 55 realized. So with that as a prelude, I would like to just flip through the document with you and not, we're not going to go through it word by word or even page by page, but I do want to give you a sense of how it's set up and certainly focus on a few of the observations and recommendations. Any comments on anything that I just said? Okay. That this is a fluid document is probably an understatement. Even some of the items that were sent to you in the mail-out have been changed to the point that it'll bear a supplementary mailing after the commission adjourns tomorrow before this document is in its final form. But I think the direction that we're headed, the things that we're stressing, that won't change. I wouldn't lay a percentage to it, but, you know, we're much closer to being there than we are far away. So I'll just, I'll take you through the first several pages, just because I want you to see the sections this is organized into, and we're going to spend the remainder of my speaking time, perhaps another 10 minutes, and then we'll have discussion, questions and answer. We'll spend the rest of our time on what is in the version over there on the table, pages 26 through the end of the document, which is the 35 or so observations and recommendations. After an introduction, which provides the statutory charge there on what is page two and sets the context for the present master plan, we begin on page three, Roman numeral two, making the point that we are not starting from a standing stop. I'm not sure that we were last time or ever were, but we have a lot of things going in our favor this time to build on, and so I wanted to articulate and even list some of those things to remind us that we're at some point on a continuum. We're not at the beginning, and then there's a definite end. In fact, there probably, you know, there's always some precursor to the things that we're working on now, whether it was successful or widely adopted at the time, and there will be things that will go on beyond 2025 that will be important. But the point in time that we're at, we have a lot to build on toward the drive to 55. Number three, Roman numeral three on page four just begins to talk about two questions. One is the, how many credentials will we need to put us on the right path for drive to 55 attainment? And then there's more detail there than I could go into, although we will come around to some of that in the recommendations section. And then on page 10, there's a section called "degrees for what?" in which I address some of the challenges associated with alignment, and that is the question of, well, what are these degrees going to be for? Where do they need to be, people with these credentials need to be located? What kinds of industries? What kind of occupations? And what degree programs and at what level do they need to come from? On page 12, Roman numeral four, I lay out the case for three focus populations that were adopted specifically by the Funding Formula Review Committee for the awarding of special premiums for outcomes associated with these students. Those are, as in years past, the adult students and low-income students, and a new population was added this year, academically underprepared students. I will say, as an aside, that we need to probably have a better definition of academically underprepared, sort of a shorthand definition that we use for identifying the students in the funding formula, and that I used here was an ACT composite of 18 or below. Even just taking this as sort of a lowest common denominator and saying, from a data standpoint, that's problematic because not many students who go to community colleges present an ACT. So we need to think of a better definition, a more robust definition that will stand us in good stead over the next 10 years. Be that as it may, that's how it was defined for the present purpose, current purpose. And then after making the case for the three focus groups, beginning on page 38, Roman numeral five, I have a discussion of, not only do we have a lot to build on, we've got a lot in our tool belt to use as we seek to continue to make progress along the path to the drive to 55. Broadly speaking, some of those tools are the drive to 55 agenda itself, and there's several subparts to that, the Complete College Tennessee Act of 2010, which was really, you know, landmark legislation, sort of a sea change, and we still, we operate under a lot of those assumptions that were new to us back then and now are just part of the air we breathe and the water around here now. We also have finance policy and alignment thereof at the top of page 21 as a set of tools at our disposal. And then lastly, on page 22, under the advice of the folks that work in these areas, wanted to talk a little bit about how the completion initiative is not devoid of an access element. There's still, is still an outreach initiative, an access initiative. Folks have to get into school before they get out of school, and the payoff in craft terms for institutions and for students themselves doesn't really happen, or to the extent it could unless these students participate successfully. Back when I was new in this business, which is longer now than I care to think about, access really did just mean getting students in the door and making sure we were equitable and representing diversity, and when we did that, and we really sold ourselves short in that we weren't thinking about the end game for students. This agenda forces us to think about access, but in a more, I think, intellectually honest way. We don't want to have students come into the system, invest a lot of themselves and their time and their money if they don't finish, and they may in some ways be worse off than they were before, certainly financially speaking. So this is an access agenda, and we talk a little bit about how we try to focus on that in our adult learner initiatives and our P-16 initiatives. And there's a huge list on both of those counts, in P-16 and adult learners, of programs and projects and initiatives that we're pursuing through grant-funded means and other means that will find their way into the appendix. The focus of this plan is not so much on that activity, as sort of the, what should it all be about? And so I tried a way to make all these C-words line up, but it's about, you know, building capacity in local communities so that we end up with a rich culture of college-going and success, you know, access and success. So having treated that one somewhat awkwardly, we'll go on down to the next, page 26, which is the observations and recommendations. Again, here, there are 35 of these, so since I probably have five minutes left, I'm not going to go through each of them. But I did want to sort of talk about the, each concept under what would be sort of the bold italic font and what we're trying to get at within each one of those. Terms of how many credentials, bottom of page 26, charting a glide path. There are a lot of, there's a big conversation going around nationally right now about, okay, drive to 55. I think we have a sense of what that means, but what do we count? You know, we're all comfortable with post-secondary diplomas, certificates, and degrees, but there's a whole lot of other recognition of knowledge and skills and abilities that are gained that, in some places, is a little bit squishy, it's a gray area, and we need better working definitions of what's going to count and what's not, and that requires an analysis of the rigor and the quality of those programs. Do they link up with workforce outcomes that we can measure? Can we capture data on it? Who's going to count it? And what would the stakes be and those kinds of things? So recognizing that we want the drive to 55 to be as robust and as broadly applied as possible, but we have to put a fence around it at some point. Right now, we put a very, probably very close fence around it, and that is degrees, credentials, and, I'm sorry, degrees, certificates, and diplomas awarded by our post-secondary institutions. There's a good chance that that might need to be widened about a bit, but I don't think we know enough yet to say what that's going to be. Moving on to page 27, where we continue to discuss this, what I'll say about the glide path to the drive to 55 is, I think, first of all, rhetorically, the goal is well-placed. It's aspirational, but I believe it's attainable. It's certainly united a bunch of activity, not only within the post-secondary community but without, with our affiliates and allies. And when you look at the glide path of the number of credentials that we need to produce over the coming years, it adds up over time to 78,000 or so additional awards than what we're currently producing now. I think in a given year right now, our last count was about 70,000 credentials, and by 2025, we need to be at about 78,000-ish. And so when you look at that, it's compound annual growth rate of a little over 1% a year, but every year, you're building on the previous base, it was increased by 1%. So it's not, it's a heavier lift than it might sound, but it's certainly doable, and I think the inclusion of the certificates actually has helped Tennessee in previous iterations of goal setting. We did not include that, much to my embarrassment, and this has actually helped us. I'll stop at the end of the page 27 to entertain any comments or questions, but as we move on over, we talk about the sector shares of that growth, and we had to make some assumptions. At first, I was just going to say, well, who knows how the sectors are going to change, but was advised by the committee and by Dennis that we really need to take a whack at thinking about how those enrollments and completions might shift over the next 10 years. And it is, it really is more of a guess, intuitive guess than it is scientific analysis or empirical. But for purposes of this plan, at this point in time, we see the community colleges growing incrementally, but more than anybody else. The TCAT's next, and then the DPSA schools, due to a lot of fluctuations in their data. Now, I don't know how SARAH is going to affect all this at all, but we see them taking the hit, and we are envisioning no significant change in the, over a 10-year period now. I'm not talking about tomorrow or this next year, the public universities or the independents. So those are the assumptions that we built into the sector change behind the gross number that we have in there for the number of additional degrees we're going to need.
David?
Yes.
Remind us what the current attainment rates are. 55 is the target, kind of where we are currently?
Yeah.
And also, we've talked a lot about the challenges of capturing that certificate data from the population. Talk about the challenges that, well, not just Tennessee, but the nation faces and how we go about addressing those.
So if you look up on, Dennis, your site, which uses census data, about the educational attainment of working-age adults, the data are there, but educational attainment is only still, at this point in time, defined as those holding an associate's degree or above. Well, that leaves out a whole lot of people in Tennessee. We have a very robust, you know, certificate and diploma awarding sector, and none of that in the past has gone into this kind of exercise. When we try to include it, it's much more difficult than you would think. We utilized a study done by Bill Fox and his folks at CBER, which they estimate the current stock of certificate and diploma holders to be like 4%. That comports pretty nicely with a national study done out of Georgetown that says nationally it's five. it's 5%. So we took the more conservative and estimated that we're currently at about 38%. So there's a 17% in terms of citizens that hold degrees, and that's the same as saying that's what, that's what Tennessee has to produce. Who knows what's going to happen with net mobility into and out of the state? We didn't make any assumptions about the mortality of individuals, you know, being any different than the, educated individuals being any different than the overall. I mean, you could really, and we did chase our tails quite a bit on this, but this is where we ended up. So the stock of certificate and diploma holders, about 4%, and going from 38% to about 55. We're still in the 44th, 45th range in terms of our rank in attainment as traditionally measured. There is another point that's not addressed here, but I want to plant it in your mind because it bothers me and I want it to bother you too. And that has to do with the fact that we're assuming that the placement and staying in-state rates of our graduates are going to not change from what they've been in the past, because what we observe in the data is an artifact, people that get degrees here and move, and stay in the state to work, or those that move, start from out and move in, and people that start here and move out, that none of that's going to change. Well, it might change. And so this is the kind of thing we're really going to have to collect data on every year and update, and so that every year we're making minor corrections to the flight path we, instead of looking at it five years from now and going, whoa, we've got to come back over here. So I hope that's not too technical of a definition for anybody. Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions on that? Because those are some assumptions that, at first glance, might seem a little hard to deal with, but we did use past data as well as what we think might happen in the future to inform it.
I want to make something clear to myself, because as I read through this, I kept thinking I was drinking from the fire hydrant, but was one of your assumptions, or was it not, the increase, a possible increase in the number of graduate degree holders, certificate holders, whatever, moving into Tennessee? Did you hold that constant, or did you consider a change?
We did consider it, but we did not factor it in because Tennessee is a net importer of folks at every level of post-secondary attainment, from graduate to undergraduate to some college, to high school only, to less than high school. So you've got this importation of people that are, I guess to sort of put it crassly, you know, contributing to the Drive to 55, and then you've got the same situation with people who have less than a post-secondary credential. So there's this amorphous group counted in the census as having some college but no degree. It doesn't say you've got a certificate or what, it just says you've got some college, no degree. We asked Dennis's folks, we asked the folks at Georgetown, CBER, and at the end of that, I basically said, you know what, we're just going to assume that that all kinds of cancels, all kind of cancels each other out at the moment. So there is no, we are a net importer of degreed people. We're also a net importer of people that have only basic literacy skills, if that. So it may be a little counterintuitive to think about it first, since you know that we do import college-degreed people, but when you look at that numerator against the entire stock of folks that will be in the state in 10 years, right now, we're seeing it as a wash.
See, I see Drive 55 as really a two-sided issue. It is upon us to educate more of our population, whether that's with a degree, a certificate, whatever. But I also see it as the Department of Economic and Community Development creating a, an environment that invites more business, more jobs, more industry. So, but it sounds like we're proceeding as this is really higher education's responsibility more than anyone else. Am I correct or not?
Dr. Dean or others may want to chime in on this. You're right. I hope that that happens. It'll make this agenda a whole lot more easy, and I hope that we, you know, something begins to happen to where maybe we'll intersect, erect a wall around the state where all of our people that get degrees here stay here. But for the current, for the time being, you know, we tried to be as conservative as we could, not cheat, you know, make sure that if we get there, higher ed will have done, you know, we'll have been reasonable in the assumptions that we made about the conditions that will exist.
You know, Pam, that's a good observation. Sorry, let me catch up. The, you know, one of the, this is focused on the supply side quite a bit, obviously. What is higher ed supplying to the 55%? Randy Boyd at ECD is now thinking about the demand side, and how does that intersection with workforce development and the economics of the state intersect back with higher ed? And so, and that's never really been done before, and so I give, there's a lot of credit to be had there from Chairman Boyd's side about thinking through it from that perspective as well. So hopefully, these things come together, and this is not a document that lives in isolation just within higher ed, but is embraced even in that thought process by folks at ECD and Labor about the economy of the state going forward.
Well, I noticed the Governor's Workforce Capacity Subcommittee. I mean, I would think that would be ground zero for meeting out these kinds of issues. But, and Evan, I'm sorry, I know you recognize, but I just want to make one more observation, and that is that what I don't want to happen is that higher education does carry the entire burden, and that the collection of information from industry and business in the state is not done accurately, because it's the outcome of that information that should dictate the course offerings, the enrollments, everything that we do in higher education. I don't really want the Department of Economic and Community Development to determine what John and Joe do at their schools. I want that to be us, but I want to have assurance that they are doing, you know, that they are always counting apples and apples, that they're doing a consistent job, and so that the information they feed to us is really what we need to know. So I guess I like, I would like to see a whole lot more involvement on that side.
Couple of observations.
I think related to that. And that, that is the workforce subcabinet that has now been created, that has, I think, my mind, has the right people around the table, and they are going about the business. Those right people include Randy Boyd, ECD, Human Services, really going about the business of trying to create that infrastructure within which there is this connectivity and this kind of constant communication across lines so that we're informed by what's happening in terms of economic development, but they're also informed by kind of what we're doing and trying to make sure that it's more than just us as a sector trying to predict what we ought to be doing, but it really is a more integrated approach to what the state needs for all of us to be doing in order to meet the state's needs. And the 55 is, is really based on, you know, the work that Georgetown has done, and the timing gets a little bit strange because they issue reports in cycles and then they update reports and so forth. And we had a lock on a number, so we locked on 55. But that really is a description of what Georgetown believes, based on the research that they have done, and which we think is pretty high-quality, that the economy we have, and the economy we see, that's what that economy is going to have to have in terms of credentialed workers by 2025 in this case. What they haven't done is tried to predict or project or assume how good we are as a state in creating an economy that's different, better, higher skilled, higher paid, higher level of activity going on. So I think we all are kind of well-advised to kind of view this as, if we're just going to do what we know we have to do, we've got to get to 55. If we're going to be able to do what we want to do, we need to go beyond 55. So this is, these are kind of minimum numbers that, that we can see today, and we'd like for Randy Boyd and the folks over in the economic development area to be bringing us more and more and more challenges as a state to be able to fill higher-level jobs as we go forward and more, you know, more credentials. So, so I think there's a lot of good work that's being done outside just, just the higher education sector to try to figure out how to align and integrate really the state's interest into, into what we're all doing.
I mean, it's one thing to have a target of post-secondary credentials and a percentage, it's another one to know exactly which areas you need to focus on because of where industry's going to go and where our economy's going to go. So one could somewhat predict that if you look at STEM disciplines, they're going to be in higher demand than some of the others, and so that's probably an area where you need to have additional focus. But, you know, in that last workforce cabinet meeting, John and I were there, I actually said to ECD and Department of Labor, so a company comes to Tennessee and says, I want to move to Pickett Town, Murphysboro, and I make something out of metal. I call it being a widget maker, right, John? And I need welders, but I need a specific kind of welder. How do I get the welders I need? And how do, how do they go about ECD finding out, do I have enough welders and does John have the capacity at the TCATs to develop those? And they end up, I guess, in a mixed model, both asking the TCATs to figure out how to get the kind of welder I need, but also in a model that says, can we import them or can we find them in other places to bring them to Tennessee as part of the package around a company coming? So it, there are lots of moving parts right now with the capital outlay piece. We have worked through this one on workforce development that tie us to these other state agencies in trying to answer the right question about what kind of mix of 55 do you need? If you look at the capital outlay piece of this, there's some notion about priority for Drive to 55 as part of that package, but remember the words "economic development" are in there. Those are very important to our non-formality units who aren't, traditionally not in the business of traditional undergraduate production. So I hope you all keep that in mind, since we have the largest group of non-formality units, and John's sick of me talking about them.
It's important just not to. Pressing on so that I can give way to more important things. Alignment, basically talking about there is that I wish it were the case that there were a database that we could consult that said, you know, we need these jobs, the supply-demand ratio is X, and we need X more at this level in these fields to fill that. And it's much more complex and shifting than that. Things change on the fly. There are lots of lists out there that do what I just described, that talk about the highest need fields in terms of raw numbers of people that have some level of post-secondary training and supply-demand ratios. And yet, we still, at least, there's a sense in some quarters that we're, you know, we're oversupplying some areas and undersupplying others. Well, the inconvenient fact is that, you know, we have probably most of the programs already that we're offering that would fill a lot of these needs, and students aren't enrolling in them. So being the father of a young man in his young twenties, I know that my limit, my limitations as a father to dictate his preferences or choices, and so at the state level, you multiply that so many times over, one becomes humble very quickly about that. But, so what can we do in terms of alignment? Part of it is better communication. We shouldn't assume that all students know that engineers make X, or city planners make Y. Getting that information out to this network that goes far beyond the high school guidance counselor, so there's a big communication strategy piece around that. The other thing is communication within ourselves. I think the work that's being done, the Governor's Workforce Subcabinet is great and groundbreaking in that we're actually thinking about just very finite thing, the information needs that I have relative to the economic development people or workforce needs from us. While it's been a very messy conversation, it's been a very useful one. I think that's going to have to be what we sort of commit ourselves to, sort of reflecting back on your earlier comments, Pam, as we try to, I think alignment is something we will slouch toward instead of, you know, carve out a perfect path toward it. I'm going to spend much less time on the rest of this. I apologize for sort of overstepping right now. Articulation transfer, there are a host of things that are good, that are in, that were in the CCTA and that just need monitoring. The Tennessee transfer pathways, reverse transfer, we're often running on a good path on that. We were one of the late grantees to this 15-state consortium of folks that got a reverse transfer grant from Lumina, and we're already awarding more in our first pilot semester with not all the institutions participating, already awarded more reverse transfer degrees in the state of New York that was, has been at for two or three years. So I think we're in, often running in a lot of good directions, but recommendations there really have to do more about how we can make sure that, you know, address any cracks in the system as they might present themselves. Funding mechanisms and issues, I mostly focus at the first there on the funding formula and quite frankly lend approval or give, give cover to the folks on the Funding Formula Review Committee. There's nothing new there. And in number 20, I think it's important that we talk about the need for a frank and far, a very robust discussion about the Drive to 55 and how we pay for the component parts, not only as they exist now, but as they might exist in the future. There's a whole lot of language in here that's quite, there's a lot behind it. When I talk about federal support, I mean, we've talked before about seeking special dispensation from the U.S. Department to repackage or redistribute Pell Grants in a way that meets Tennessee's needs. And there's just a whole lot under this number 20 that could keep us busy between now and at least five years from now, that in a plan of this nature, thought it better to keep high level, but we have not arrived. I think the policy discussions are out in front of the operational discussions around, you know, how, who, who's going to pay for what and how much, and that involves not just the state, but federal, local, business and industry, the institutions themselves and so forth. Back to the constructing a culture, the capacity building in communities for outreach, basically just saying there that one of the ways that we, we T-HAT can facilitate the information needs of folks at the county level is they try to figure out their part of the Drive to 55 is providing some county-level data to the extent that that's possible, regional when it's not, about increases in either high school grad rates, continuation into college rates, progression rates, graduation rates at the local community level so that they can get a better sense of their piece of the Drive to 55. I think most citizens might have heard of the Drive to 55, they've certainly heard of the promise, but I don't think anybody, not many people, outside of Jessica Gibson maybe and Floyd Grant, but not many people are really thinking about how does, how does all that filter its way down to the local level around an actionable plan and strategy, set of strategies? Can I do justice to that one? All right. One of the things I didn't say earlier in the, how many do we need, but since I'm talking about adults a bit here now, this plan, we know that the difference between where we are now and where we want to be in terms of 55% post-secondary attainment will largely rely on the inclusion and successful participation of populations of students that have mostly been underserved in the past. The ones I mentioned already, military veterans, first-generation students, folks in STEM careers. So it's going to, if we really do that, take it seriously, it's going to result in all kinds of transformation to the system as we currently know it, how it currently operates, not only in terms of supports, but when we offer things, how we offer them, partnerships that we get into in order to make those, to serve those populations effectively. We, we could have said, we see the change between what, where we're on a glide path to be now by 2025 and where we need to be. We'll get half of that from traditional and half of that from adults. But given all the policy focus and background information that we got from Dennis and his folks on how we can't get there from here unless we focus on adults, we felt it was right rhetorically to say that two-thirds of the new growth has to come from adults, a third from traditional. And when you look at sort of the, the nonlinear growth in high school graduates, that's what we've recently experienced and our predicted experience, I don't think you can really cut it any other way. I don't think there's going to be, I don't think our future bets should be placed on huge influx of non-traditional students, especially when we have 900,000 folks in the state with some college and no degree. So that's something new. That's some new territory that we stake out in this plan as well. Yes, sir?
Did you consider, in this regard, the non-resident students, if you have capacity? Because, you know, I think the national view of this is, or depending on which report, well over half of the students who are non-resident who come to a state end up staying in the state once they complete their credentials. So if you have capacity at an institution, then being able to pull down the barriers around non-resident tuition, if you're really into a Drive to 55, might also enhance your ability to get there. ability to get there with traditional students as opposed to adult learners.
That's certainly in my mind. It was what was in my mind when I talked about the summit and talking about, you know, the ramifications of D-55 on non-resident and resident tuition. But I think it would also be worth mentioning that in sort of the other, I wouldn't say underserved, but it's certainly underrepresented. In the past, Tennessee has had a fairly, parochial is kind of a bad sounding word, but, you know, we sort of wanted to keep everybody here that's from here. But financially and for a lot of other good reasons, I think it's something we should stress more in the wording of the document. Online education, the main point to remember there is that that's going to be undergoing, sort of like the PLA process that Jessica Wilson and Jessica Gibson and Wilson Finch spearheaded a couple of years ago. There's this very, to the students' eyes, very mysterious world, world of online education that I think we could do a lot to disentangle just by repositioning the way we post that information. And there's also some implications for looking at some of the premiums that have been charged with that in the past and see if that's still warranted. But basically, more transparency and greater, well, greater consideration of the implications for prior learning assessment in a virtual online education world as we currently are doing in the on-the-ground world. And then to finish up specifically on PLA, since I mentioned that earlier, the recommendations there are intended just to make that activity more widespread, focused on best practices, talk about a net, a support net of individuals and institutions with expertise that institutions should avail themselves of. We, THEC, at the state level can help that along by publishing, taking inventory of and publishing where this expertise exists. If somebody's been through a long, drawn-out process to figure out how a student with this portfolio was awarded, we should leverage that information. We shouldn't make everybody become expert on PLA on their own. And there are outside entities that want to help us do that as well. And then just moving on to the finish line here, we have two recommendations having to do with evaluation for improvement and accountability. Fortunately, Tennessee has a longstanding culture of doing that, starting with the performance funding program that began in Betty, '74, it's 1974. And she used to be next door to me for many years. I sort of soaked that data. But now that performance funding is called quality assurance funding, and it provides an important, I think, philosophical as well as monetary counterbalance to the quantitatively-based, productivity-based funding formula. And it allows, to a certain extent, an institution to customize and use qualitative measures as they craft an assessment program that helps them, regardless of the implications for state accountability, with accreditation and just having an ongoing plan for, a plan for ongoing institutional improvement. And the last, but certainly not least, recommendation has to do with THEC's following up of all this from a 30,000-foot level with an ongoing yearly master plan progress report that will be quantitative, yes, but will also be sort of track, following up on some of the things that we lay out here to make sure, to see how we're doing and where there have been unexpected roadblocks, what might be done, and where we've put things in the win column to give our systems and community credit for that as well. So Dr. Deaton, I apologize for running over. We only do this once every five years, so.
Other questions?
Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. This may be off-base, but are there underserved regions in the state? And does it ever make sense to look at closing the gap by putting resources towards those particular regions? Or is that captured in the age range?
Yes, Ann. So actually, at the request of this gentleman here to my left, we have done that, and it deserves to be sort of put front and center anew. But when you look at the adult population by educational attainment level, there are definitely pockets within the state where you can see those folks existing in greater quantities or concentrations than others. Oddly enough, it seems to have something to do with a post-secondary provider being in the area. So that information, we need to figure out a path from that information to then what do we do, you know? It certainly, you know, that brings into play capital processes and building commission and all that stuff. But we do know that information, and it's a good point to bring it up here because it's something that we could certainly publish it within the context of this plan to focus attention. When we talk about underserved, I'll say from my own background, I tend to think of people, types of, you know, groups of people. But there are actually, you know, geographic tracks that are underserved as well.
Follow-up to that. Not only, not only are there issues about underserved populations, but there are regional overlays on workforce needs that change, that are different in some parts of the state. So, you know, this is a very long, skinny state with lots of, with lots of different subregions. And so just a recognition of regional variation and need is probably worthy of a passing note all the way along here.
We actually do have some maps that, you know, we could put in an appendix or something, but I'll take that comment.
I'd like to see just in terms of what data you do have. I'd actually like to.
Dr. Deaton, if there are no other questions, then I'm through.
No, I would just make a comment that I sort of served on the committee, and I think it's hard to see from a summary document of only 40 pages or whatever this is, the amount of effort, thought, and collaboration that went into this. It was a very laborious process. I understand the work that was involved. I think you came out with what you could. And I do think that, you know, you can wordsmith this for the rest of the 10 years to a degree, and some of it's probably needed. But at the end of the day, I want to say too that I kind of got from the announcement of the drive to 55 that it was more of, it's kind of a chicken and egg kind of issue to some extent, and that I get that Georgetown's predicting this. And I think the idea is that we wanted to make this a state that was there and that this is the egg. You're going to use it as a recruiting tool and to stay up and keep the state's economy on par with the country as it moves in those directions. And that was a requirement to do that. And so I think that's a strong part of what this plan helps us think towards and do. I also think it's important, because I think I've observed this before, industry and businesses are going to have the labor force they need somehow, or they won't stay in the state. So they do fulfill the needs. The real question and the real issue that this addresses is whether the jobs that will be here in 2025 are being filled by Tennesseans and residents of Tennessee, or whether they'll be filled by people that they have to recruit from outside the state to do that. Because businesses that require those skill sets will find them. And I think it's imperative that, you know, to be responsible to the citizens of the state of Tennessee. This is what we need to do for Tennessee residents to bring them forward.
Dr. Deaton, process, what happens once the commission approves this document? Where is it routed? How's it released? What are the plans?
Good question. So, and I'll receive feedback on this, but the idea would be to distribute it widely to the higher ed community, of course, as well as executive and legislative leadership, and for the public, put on the website. In the past, and we've commented on this, these typically will sit on our bookshelves and not go much further. And my hope this time is that it is something that is at least philosophically understood, if not read word for word, by people, by policymakers in positions of power where it can influence how the state thinks about the next 10 years. And so our hope is that we distribute it to more widely than we have in the past, and it becomes an animating document, not just simply a one-point-in-time piece.
I'd like to, since Dr. DePietro, you raised that question, think if there might be enough in common about this to where either there are joint letters to the editor written or as opportunities arise, meeting with an editorial board in at least the major metropolitan areas involving the system leaders and you and Claude, just to raise awareness that we are thinking about these things. I don't expect this to be, you know, a top 40 hit or anything like that. But I mean, to do more than we've done in the past to try to raise awareness about some of the issues that are in here, I guess I've evolved a bit on this, you know? I thought, well, communication, that's somebody else's job, but, you know? Anyway, just something to think about, and I'll just say that and let you all think on it for a while, but.
Comment, we've talked about the integration of this information and all this work with workforce development and ECD, and how does this, how do we coordinate this, these initiatives with secondary school education and preparedness for kids? Because a whole lot of what happens in post-secondary is a result of what's happening or not happening prior to them getting to the position to come in. So what, how do we make certain that there's alignment there as well?
You have to be very intentional about that, and we haven't always been in the past. You know, the workforce subcabinet is dealing with this issue as well that the chancellor spoke about. And one of the areas they're starting to move towards, and the commissioner of education's on there as well, is having a more precise definition of college and career-ready, that K-12 feels comfortable about, that's been vetted through higher ed, that is linked up so we know with confidence that we're producing more of what students see and what higher ed needs. And that pipeline, there's not a leakage there like there has been at some times in the past. So that's one key element, is just making sure that we are talking with each other and trying to make those connections where they need to exist. Because you're right, I mean, many of the issues we deal with were 18 years in the making, not the fault of the K-12 sector entirely, but just, that's just where life brought us to at this moment in time. And it's tough to then remediate those issues just in the three to six years we have them. And so it really is a long-term type of strategy and set of solutions. Hopefully, the TLDS, the Long Student Data System that we're building, can help identify where there are areas of intervention that we could pursue as we get a longer-term picture of a student's career. There's lots of tactical ways to go about that, but primarily, I would say, Bill, that it's us being very intentional about making that part of the solution and not just letting it sort of drift away. Other questions about the?
I'd like to make a quick comment about the online education portion. I think it makes a lot of sense for us to focus on this. And one of the reasons I might say that is because we have this emphasis on the adult learner population, but, you know, there's still a tuition premium for online courses. So, I mean, if you've got kids at home, you have a tough schedule, to me, that is one of the easier ways to reengage with school. And it seems kind of counterintuitive that we haven't drawn attention to this in the past, but I'm happy to see it in there.
Betty, we're ready for your presentation for secondary education authorization.
Chairman, if I may, by way of, as Betty gets ready, so, you know, the two, two of the key ways that the master plan manifests itself are in these finance tools. The most historical, the longest-standing is, of course, performance funding. Now, quality assurance, and I'll be charged a dollar every time I say it wrong, and the formula's next. And so these really are two of the key ways that this takes life and that the state has leverage to try to get to where we need to be as a state. So it's a really key area of policy.
All right, thank you. And I just want to say good afternoon. I really would like to introduce Ms. Victoria Harple. For the past eight months, she has been involved in the development of crafting the new QAF cycle. And prior to that, Victoria was involved with the Race to the Top Grant, as well as preparing the report for the teacher report card. She has been doing that for the past, for the past three years here at THEC, and she has really done an awesome job in that position. And also, I wanted to take the time to really thank Courtney Lenartz, who is serving as a graduate assistant within the Division of Academic Affairs. So thank you so much, Courtney. And Courtney is headed, she just completed her master's degree in higher education this past May, and she's headed to the University of Maryland in August. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Dr. Deaton. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about the 15-20 standards for quality assurance funding. And as was mentioned a couple of times before, we're now going to be known as quality assurance funding instead of performance funding. So this is definitely one of the longest-running programs, actually in the country, that really uses funding to promote certain activities and certain goals. And really, for us, it's academic excellence and serving the needs of the students through continuously improving. Each of the cycles has really had a particular flavor, some specific goals that we've laid out. So what we're doing in this cycle is no different as far as that goes of having some real defining features. In the 5-10 cycle, was really a focus on transfer and articulation. And this last cycle, since we introduced the funding formula, some of those meeting measures of graduation and retention, we saw those move over to the funding formula. And performance funding, having more of the qualitative kind of check on the quality of assurance. And that's why in this newest cycle, we're going to go ahead and start calling it that as the quality assurance funding, to distinguish the mission from the funding formula. But a program that's been around a long time and has really brought together the institutions as well as the systems to collaborate about what should be involved here. And so it really was a process that began months and months ago and brought together a number of committees. You can see the members of our advisory committee, who are really integral in helping us review these standards, but also a scoring subcommittee, and then some of the committees looking at the academic programs. So when you count these committee members, along with members of the THEC academic affairs staff, the fiscal staff, and the PPR staff, we're looking at about 50 individuals who came together and brought their expertise and their feedback as we examine the standards that'll guide us through the next five years. So for those of you who are familiar with quality assurance funding, now I'm going to charge myself a dollar on that performance funding. Now, I'm going to do it. And I've, yeah, be in trouble for that. So it breaks down in similar ways that we've seen before. So about 75% of the points or dollars that are tied to this are tied to the student learning and engagement standards. And then the other 25% is that student access and success, and we'll dig a little bit deeper into each of these. So the Gen Ed standard has been around for quite a while. It's been one of those hallmarks to really incentivize institutions into digging deep into what was going on in their general education program and making sure that they were providing a high-quality Gen Ed program. So a few of the things that were, went on this cycle is we reviewed what assessments were options for institutions, and based on the recommendations from the board, from the advisory committee, went ahead and made some changes to those that institutions can choose from. We also incorporated the reverse transfer policy. And so we looked at the policy that TBR has about reverse transfer and made sure that it was very clear for institutions as to where this kind of testing should take place, want to get rid of any of those ambiguities. And then last, we looked at a sampling option that really opened the door for institutions of any size, if they want to go ahead and use a sampling option rather than testing all of their graduates, as long as it meets certain statistical thresholds. Another hallmark that we've seen over several cycles has been the major field assessment. And so really just wants to make sure that the education that they're getting within that department, within that major, is of the highest quality. And so the things we've done here, we reviewed the list of approved examinations, which just makes sense to do every five years, just to check in, make sure we're meeting kind of what the industry standards are. And then also to look at the locally developed test. So institutions have an option, or each department has an option. If there's a national test that really fits the need of assessing if there's a real high quality going on, they could go ahead and use that national assessment. If there's not one, departments can choose to create one themselves, or what we call a locally developed test. So what we did in this cycle was really just to articulate that process, that it's something that, you know, the test just created. that, you know, the test just created, it's piloted, and then it's used for funding purposes for them. So it just really articulated that timeline and what needs to go in to creating that test at the local level. So now kind of our defining features that are newer to this particular cycle. So there'll be things that were worked out in academic programs, institutional satisfaction studies, adult learners, obviously, we're going to hear more about with the focus of the master plan, Tennessee job market, graduate placement, and then our student access and success. So academic programs, again, is a standard that's been around for a while, there's these two pieces, so accreditation, and that's always been around as part of quality assurance funding, and will continue to be so. It's a really key piece in making sure that the rigor stays very high at the institutions. But for programs or departments where it doesn't, there's not an accreditation agency that really makes sense as to kind of the check on the quality, institutions or departments go through what are called program evaluations, and you have two options, either you can use a program review or an academic audit. Both have a portion where there's a self-study done by the department, as well as an external review of people coming in and using a rubric to look at, you know, what's going on, are the standards staying very high, are they meeting the needs of their local communities with the program that they have before them? So what we did in this, in the review cycle, was go through, and we brought together, and this was a place where faculty were really key, is we got several committees together to look at the rubrics and the program evaluation and academic audit, and have them take a look and say, you know, is, is what we're putting before someone who comes in to do an external review, really those things that are the most important, that are going to assure that quality and rigor stay really high? And so we went through, and we evaluated, and tweaked the rubrics to make sure that that's exactly what they were doing. So when a team came in, whether it was to look at, and so there are several levels, those for certificates and associates, or backglow at degrees, or graduate, that they were really getting at the heart of what's going to keep quality and rigor very high. And so there's now more uniformity across the different rubrics, for the different levels as far as the certificate and associate, the backglow, and the graduate. Also tried to work in what, you know, research tells us about the best practices around those, and have some greater alignment with the SAC-COC standards. Institutional satisfaction, this is one that if you're familiar with performance funding, or now quality assurance, you'll have heard student satisfaction before. Well, we've kind of broadened that net, and the big difference being is that there's a unique schedule for universities and community colleges, and that's usually, they've been on kind of the same path. But given what's going on in the state right now, we thought it made sense to use this opportunity to let the differing mission with the universities and the community colleges really show through in the stakeholders that they engage. So for the universities, they'll engage the students, faculty, and alumni. So in that first year, they'll give the National Survey of Student Engagement, or what we call NESI. Then they'll do, and this is new, the FESI, and so that's the Faculty Survey of Student Engagement. So really getting kind of the two sides of that coin, what are students saying about their engagement and the environment on campus for learning, and then what are faculty saying about student engagement and that environment created on campus? And it's a really powerful tool when you put that information side by side, and really allow campuses to start digging into it. So we're really excited about that piece. And then in the third year, universities will engage with the PEG alumni survey. They've engaged with alumni before, and they obviously continue to do so. This is a survey that came up to us as a suggestion from the UT system that they had used as a good way to get information from alumni, and it's done aligned, so they can actually, any of their alumni with an email address, they can get a survey too, pretty easily, and with, in that instance, sometimes lower cost. And then in their year five, there's a comprehensive report, which gives them an opportunity to take the data that they've drawn in each of those four years leading up to it, really get their hands dirty with it, and come up with a strategy for how they're going to use it to make improvements on campus. Community colleges are obviously a little bit different, and we really wanted to capitalize on this point in time that we're at with the Tennessee Promise Students entering campus. So what, the two groups that they'll engage with, both being students, but one is a focus on entering students. So the SENSE survey is a survey of entering student engagement, and it's a complement to the SESI survey, which is the Community College Survey of Student Engagement. But it captures the opinions and understanding of students just a few weeks after they step onto campus. So if this all is approved by the board, they would be surveyed just in September or October. So we really get those first impressions of those Tennessee Promise students when they step onto campus, have the opportunity to get their feedback, and really immediately start making some database decisions about what those students are experiencing and seeing on campus. And then the other, again, piece is the SESI survey, so that's how the students are engaged, what kind of learning environment is being created for them. And again, they have that comprehensive report in year five, where they, just like the universities do, get to really dig down and engage with the data, and come up with a good, strong plan for how they want to use it, and how it informs what they do across the university, or in this case, community college. So adult learner success, we obviously have been hearing a lot about adults today, and with some really good reason. This was a lot of fun to work on, because I got to work with some of our PPR staff, Jessica Gibson and Marion Ramey were really helpful in putting this standard together, but to really draw the attention, once again, in QAF, the difference between your traditional students and what it takes to educate an adult student, because the services, the kind of environment that's necessary on campus are not necessarily the same. So what we put into place is this standard that goes, has both a qualitative and a quantitative component. So your quantitative piece, each year, the institutions are going to look at the graduation rate of adults and the retention rate of adults, and this was particularly important, that adults, once you get them on your campus, if you can get them to stay that year, this is a population that wants to get through, they want to complete, they want to graduate. These are usually a group of people, if you can get them on campus, you can get them to stay and engage, they want to be there, they want to finish their credential. So rewarding institutions for doing just to that. The other piece is more qualitative, and so in that first year, they conduct a self-assessment, and we're asking them to engage with the adult students on their campus, whether, through some type of survey, to get information about what are the services that you need, what is the environment like that are making things more or less helpful for you, and asking institutions to sit down with that information and make a plan going forward. In year two, and then check back in with that plan and monitor, how is it, how is it going? So we've assessed ourselves and made an action plan, but how, each year, are we checking back in and making sure that that's something that we're working towards? Now, adults haven't always, or for a number of cycles, have been a part of quality assurance funding. It was one of those sub-populations that you could pick from to focus on. What we've done in this cycle is elevate the adult population to a standalone standard. It's, you can't avoid paying attention to adults in this cycle. We're not going to reach our drive for 55 goals without it, and for that reason, let's focus a time, attention, and the financial resources necessary to really tackle that issue. So the Tennessee job market graduate placement rate is something that you may be, if you've, again, familiar with this, was called the job placement standard. And we've reworded what, kind of the title that we've given it, to reflect the data that'll be used going forward. So what we've gone to this year is using the Tennessee State Longitudinal Data System, and Brian Douglas and Emily House in our PPR shop were great helps on pulling this data. But what it does, and Dr. Deaton mentioned it earlier as well, is it pulls data from the Tennessee Department of Education, the Department of Labor, and THEC, and lets us follow individuals from their education into the workforce. So instead of having institutions survey graduates, what we'll do is get a uniform data pull from the TLDS system that allows us to see where, excuse me, where graduates are placed in order to come up with the graduate rate, to again, incentivize that job placement to get students working in Tennessee. The system itself captures about 89% of community college graduates, and that was a number while we were making that transition, from a way that we've calculated this in the past of using surveys, to moving forward to using this data system. We were, we were very pleased that about 89% of our graduates are showing up in this data system, whether it's that they've gone on to a four-year institution, that they're working, whether full-time or part-time, or for some, in some instances, claiming unemployment insurance. But we were secure enough in the data system that 89% of our graduates showed up somewhere in there, engaged in Tennessee, to then create a calculation based on that, that of course rewards institutions for helping their students be placed in jobs here. And then last is the student access and success piece, and this again, is the 25% piece. And institutions select five of the listed populations, and those that have the asterisk are those that are new in this cycle, to take a look at and examine over their five years in the cycle. And each institution is able to pick whichever fits most with the mission or the needs of their population. And to Chairman Cope, your question about geographic needs, that's one of the options that institutions have, is to look at, you know, what are the needs in my geographic region, to try to address those issues. But, so for this cycle, we've included veterans, and that obviously is a section of the population that we know can use some attention, because there's some unique needs there that we really can take a look at. So in the next steps, when, once these are approved by the commission, and with the commission's approval of these, we would disseminate the guidebook, so that's kind of our marching orders for their institutions and our working point as THEC begins working with each of the institutions. We also would hold a workshop at the Ten Air Conference, and where we, generally, we meet with the heads of institutional research, or their PF, and they're still sometimes called PF on the campus coordinators, and really sit down and engage with them about what does this look like in reality on their campuses? And then the first reports under these standards would come into us in August of 2016. Questions?
Yeah, I have just one question. I noticed in your evaluation, the quality assurance funding, that you don't use job placement for senior institutions, only community colleges. What's the thinking behind that?
The initial thinking was always that the job placement standard was most closely tied to the, to the community college institutions, as that part of their mission was to get students trained and ready for the workforce. And so that, that's the initial thinking that went into it, and that, that thinking has carried forward. It's not to say that having university graduates placed in the workforce is not a very important goal, but it's been tied to the mission.
Well, I noticed one of the discussion questions was how we could most closely align what programs we're offering with, with what the needs are, et cetera, and it seems to me that job placement is actually one of those things that helped do that. So an award on, did you get a job, is one of the things that would do that, if that's an interest. I could make an argument that you're really supposed to serve a market, and the market's students, and et cetera, so I think you could do it either way, but I just wondered what your theory was on that. Thank you.
On that point, one of the, one of the things, if I understand correctly, by going to the TLDS as our mechanism for measuring placement, that's, prior to that, we were using survey instruments at each college, I think, kind of ran it on survey, which you created some, some difficulties, and although I think it was pretty straight up, it was created the opportunity for people to approach it different ways. But the old standard was, or the, under the formula, was placement in field. That becomes much more difficult using, using a more precise measure of are they in fact in the workforce? We lose the ability to really determine whether they're in field or not. That becomes even more difficult at a four-year level, because the linkage between field of study and job market is less, less certain than it is typically in the. But for our purposes, we are using internally, at the regions, we are using placement rates at the four-year institutions as one of our measures against our strategic, strategic plan.
One of the things you can get out of the Department of Labor, you can't get occupation data, which is the big, big problem, you know, I mean, you know they're employed, you know what industry they're in, but you don't know what job they have within that industry. But you do have salary data. And so you can get something that says, are you, do you have a job that pays X? So, I mean, there is a way to, to take that TLDS data and, and get something more than just are they working, but are they working at a wage that's consistent with education level?
Absolutely, and that's some of one of the things, and the exercises we went through in deciding to go, to utilize the TLDS system, was we could see, you know, were they still at a community college, had they gone to a four-year college, were they working part-time or full-time to get, while it definitely, we lost a bit in going to it, in that we no longer have the in-field placement, but there's some things that we felt like we really gained in utilizing that uniform system.
Other states have something similar to TLDS?
They're working towards it, yes. Which states in particular, Emily, you'll have to.
I probably haven't spoken to that, but there are other states that are various.
And this will be a big step forward in actually utilizing this data for, and having it part of what's publicly discussed now, that we can, we actually have this linked data that can be utilized.
How often do we actually take that snapshot, or is it an ongoing thing?
For the standard, this standard, what we'll do is, the graduates will have one, or one year or four quarters to find full-time employment, or the calculation is done whether they got full-time employment, or whether they had an unemployment insurance claim. And so that's part of the reason why we changed the name, instead of just job placement to the Tennessee Job Market, is that it only captures people employed in Tennessee. So we wanted to make that quite clear, that it was a Tennessee job employment, but it's four quarters. And so if any of those four quarters, they show up with job placement data, they're considered having been employed. So you don't have to, that was one of the difficulties with the surveys, was that, you know, you could reach out to a person at different times, and their answer may be yes or no, with this data set, as we're able to see, if anywhere in those four quarters they were employed, we will know about it.
Victoria, we've been at this now 40 years almost or so, and it's sort of, you know, it feels very normal and natural to do quality assurance, but it's hard to overstate how radical this was in 1979 when it was first used, and the notion that funding would be based on something other than enrollments or just raw politics was just unusual. And, and it really was, and you know, and the policy adoption literature talks a lot about how states learn from each other. When this came on board, states began to copy this and emulate it, and many states tried it, and a lot of those states kind of backed off over the years, because it's very hard to maintain this, and whether it's due to financial constraints or whatever. But I think the state and political leadership here deserves this recognition for maintaining this even when times are tough, because a lot of states drifted away from this. In part, that's because of the process that Betty and her staff undergo, and having a very inclusive development of the standards. Partly, it sort of evolves with the times, it's focused on completion in one five-year sector, focused on quality now, it kind of just evolves with the policy focus is going. And so again, this feels very sort of a routine is the wrong word, but it feels like this is just something we've been doing forever, and doesn't everybody do this? But this was very radical, and it still is in many ways, and I think Tennessee deserves some, some recognition for staying with this this long, because it's not easy to do, and a lot of states drifted away from this. So I think we will also, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, go through this, and then take a break for everyone, and we should have, if we don't have cookies and sodas in there, they're on their way. So the last piece of this is the outcomes-based funding formula. Speaking of radical experiments, this is one as well. What I want to do is walk you through what the structure is of the outcomes model, and towards the end, and I'll ask Stephen Gentile and Crystal Collins, we're going to sort of show you some of the Excel files, and we're going to, as we've said in the office, err on the side of showing you a lot of the gory details, just because we feel it's important, as Victoria did with quality assurance, to talk about what it is that we're actually going to be implementing or recommending that you implement for the next budget cycle. Overall structure, we'll talk about the foundation of this, the process we went through. Overall structure, we'll talk about the foundation of this, the process we went through, and then some of the changes that are described in your notebooks, I believe it's item 1E in your notebooks, giving you an overview of what the changes are. This PowerPoint we'll make available on our website and email it out to you as we go, probably, probably this afternoon or tomorrow morning. I won't talk about all the slides in here, but to kind of give you a sense of the foundation, many, much of this is based on the Complete College Tennessee Act of five years ago, which called for the creation of, of an outcomes-based formula. And really, what that means is that the model exclusively uses things other than enrollment, is the way to say it in the negative, but it uses exclusively outcomes, and it waits those outcomes by campuses' mission, which is not always easy to get your arms around exactly what that is, but its intent is at least, to try to capture a campus's mission, and, and to wait outcomes very differently. And so in a simple way of saying it, the research function matters a whole lot more to the mission of a UT Knoxville than it would to an Austin State University, for instance. I mean, they're just different missions, focused on different types of students, and trying to pursue different outcomes that are weighted very differently. So at a base level, that's what this is trying to do, to put both the quality assurance piece and the funding formula in sort of a graphical representation, again, for years, and actually before 1979, there was no red piece of the pie. Tennessee, like a lot of states, funded almost entirely on enrollments. That changed with quality assurance introducing that 5% piece in 1979, and in 2011, by virtue of CCTA, the enrollment piece of the pie was jettisoned, and outcomes became the basis on which schools were funded. And again, this is, this is an experiment, so even though we're five years in, this is still something we are experimenting with precisely how to go about this. The precedent for the process, this is reviewing the process from five years ago, but roughly the same process has been utilized this cycle, convening a very large group of people, very noisy conversations, talk about what exactly the outcomes ought to be, how do you reflect mission, what are the focus populations, how you wrestle with the various policy trade-offs that this type of policy presents, asking for quite a bit of feedback from the committee, from presidents and chancellors about how to go about this, what outcomes to suggest, how their mission ought to be reflected, an annual review, which is important, not just setting it adrift and coming back to it in five years. And so roughly the same process was followed this time, and this is, this is really key, because without, without some semblance of buy-in, this really doesn't work. This is not to say that everything we present to you here, everything that we do in the model is completely agreed upon by every stakeholder, but we try to find the most agreement from the most people as possible, and that's, that's really the aim that we are pursuing here. So some of the changes that we'll talk about, we have some change in certain outcomes, some redefining other outcomes, changing what we used to call sub-populations, and these are consistent with the master plan, looking at adults, slow-income and underprepared, updating mission, and then some policy changes that we'll recommend involving out-of-state tuition, and just the underlying structure of the model and the way we talk about the recommendation as well. The slide here is the proposed model and its outcomes for the community colleges. Notice one of the outcomes is crossed out, two are bolded, short-term certificates and awards per FTE. The bolding indicates that there's a definitional change that is being suggested for those two outcomes. The remedial developmental success, that outcome is getting both more complicated from a policy perspective, as sales has emerged, as the corequisite model for mediation has emerged, the way we think about a remedial student and remedial needs is a bit different now, and instead of attacking that through an outcome, the proposal is to instead add that as a focus population. And when a student who needs remediation or needs support graduates, when that occurs. Short-term certificates, counting the technical certificates, and, and avoiding some of the stackable academic certificates is the change here. The main takeaway, honestly, I think of this slide, is that by and large, the outcomes for the community colleges are, are the same as they are in the current cycle, with some, some small adjustments. You know, we sometimes will say that these make a lot of intuitive sense, you just ask, and in 30 seconds, kind of go through the list of what ought to be in a community college outcomes model, and you can come up with that list. We think that list has held up pretty well. That's what our president suggested, and with those tweaks, that is the new suite of outcomes for the colleges. Same for universities, again, one removal, the transfer out outcome, which we are proposing to remove from the model, and then changes to the main, the top three of the main ones, the progression metrics, students accumulating hours towards a degree. The notion here is to move those from what would be a five-year pace, 12 hour, or 24 hours per year, thus the 24, 48, 72 checkpoints, to a 30, 60, 90, a four-year pace, more consistent with on-time completion. So that's a change that we're recommending on the university outcomes. Some specifics, the short-term certificates, again, getting away from what we saw in the last cycle, which the propensity at times to stack quite a few academic certificates, which are at times appropriate, I don't mean to imply they're not, but you'd have the same student earning sometimes four and five certificates and the associate's degree, moving instead to the technical certificates, and not being concerned about whether that's the highest credential or not that a student earned, is a change in that outcome. Very quickly, the awards per FTE, and this is designed to sort of complement the graduation rate as an efficiency metric. The universal application of awards per FTE includes some FTE that are not degree-seeking. They're there for dual enrollment purpose or some other purpose, including them artificially deflates the awards per FTE, because you've got too much stuff in the denominator. So the idea is to remove those from the denominator, giving a truer picture of awards or degrees per FTE. Again, remedial success being removed, that is now captured, as I said, with a focus population premium. So again, if a student who's identified for being underprepared for needing remediation, if he or she graduates or progresses towards a degree, a premium is applied, rather than that being a separate standalone outcome. Mentioned the 30, 60, 90 credit hours, again, trying to incentivize on-time completion at the university sector. So what were the sub-population changes? First, a point about nomenclature, we're going to switch this, the idea is to call them focus populations, they are central to the master plan, they're critical parts of quality assurance, they deserve our policy focus, and so we propose to call them that. The current model includes for all sectors, adults and low-income students. The idea now is to add an academically underprepared focus population to both the four-year and the two-year. The second suggested change is to increase the current premium applied to those students to something higher than it currently is. It's currently 40%, and what that means in practice is, if a campus graduates 100 students, all of whom are low-income or adults, then we basically count up or act like the model had 140 students who graduated. So there's a premium applied. Some of the research that we've commissioned on the formula, a lot of the anecdotal feedback we've gotten from campuses indicates that's probably too low to reflect the resource intensity and the, and the focus those populations ought to have. So we propose to increase that premium to something higher, and the current working number is 80% to reflect, again, the necessity of getting these populations to meet our goals, and the, the resources required to get them there. On the point about 80%, part of, like the master plan, part of what we will ask the commission for tomorrow, with approval, is authority to continue to fine-tune and tweak, and to work with the systems and the committee to get these numbers exactly right. There may be occasion to change 80 to 75, or 90, or to change the mission weights to more reflect campus mission, so we'll ask for authority to continue to fine-tune as we go, and this is an example of that. Mentioned the change in nomenclature to, to focus populations, and the, the way we will define that, and again, working through this still with the systems, in as broad a way as possible to capture when a student needs extra help, when they are deemed to be underprepared, however we can define that, however we capture that data, that's how we will proceed with that. Mission weights, two keys here. First is, again, sort of starting over in a reexamination of all of the mission weights, and all of the campus priority suggestions, and what, what they would wish their campus mission would be reflected with the model. So starting over really with everybody, but the community colleges in particular, and this is a suggestion that came up in conversations with board leadership, and I credit them for, for thinking of this, this is quite clever, which is to have a consistent weighting structure across the 13 community college campuses. There have been efforts made to make that more of a system, and have it act more in concert, I think it's fair to say, Chancellor, as we go forward. This would reflect that as well. It would still allow for variation within outcomes that are not degree outcomes or credential outcomes, allow a campus to have some flexibility in what it deems to be important across certain outcomes, but it would have a consistent weighting, where every campus has associate's and certificates as the highest-weighted priorities, reflecting, again, the necessity of drive to 55, so a consistent structure across the 13 community colleges. Some other policy conundrums that the model has to face. One is out-of-state tuition deduction. The current philosophical foundation of this feature is that the state ought not to subsidize an out-of-state student, to overly simplify. We think in a drive-to-55 environment, and to reflect financial realities, that's probably time to move past that, and to remove that impact from the funding formula. So what that would mean is, as we always have, we would count up all outcomes produced by any student, in-state or out-of-state. But rather than basically deducting a, a commensurate level of out-of-state tuition revenue, we will instead not do so, and allow the campus to keep that, allow them to manage within resources. Dr. Di Pietro has talked about this in terms of his 3-3-0 ambitions, and being able to manage the finances, which include out-of-state students and their revenue on his campus. It would get the formula out of the business of trying to adjudicate what's a proper revenue mix in-state or out-of-state tuition. It would be a change that would also more closely link actual performance with state funding. Right now, you could have schools who perform really well, but when the out-of-state enrollment goes up, thus that deduct grows, their funding request comes down, and there is a softer connection between their performance and their state funding. I think that's a weakness that ought to be remedied.
Was, was the effect of the out-of-state tuition basically, had more out-of-state students, is that the net effect?
Essentially, yes, yeah, it was.
And especially those schools that might be closer to geographic corner, like University of Memphis or Oxford.
Oxford, this is, I think, if you look at, for Tennessee, President of a weak, great state, 20. Go to the Southern Law University in Carbondale, you go as an in-state student if you're from Tennessee. You go the same, so universities like the two I'm mentioning are close to the border, and having some accommodation for this deduct not being there really becomes a reciprocal issue.
One of the dangers of this would be what North Carolina, Iowa have faced, where a flagship or other school has become so heavily out-of-state that it becomes a policy issue. I don't think any of our schools are, are near that point, and so that's not a danger here, I don't believe.
Within the process of going through this 3-3-0 that Russ mentioned, one of the boundaries we did set on out-of-state enrollment was 25%. I don't think we're headed there overnight, in fact, it'll take a long, long time. Knoxville has the latitude, from the standpoint of the numbers of people who apply out-of-state, to secure additional enrollment, but we aren't going to move toward a 50 or 60% out-of-state model. In fact, what we've stipulated was that we maintain the number of Tennessee enrollees while growing, at, at the present level minimally, or grow it at our institutions, while in tandem, growing out-of-state enrollment if it's possible.
Two more structural changes to, to talk to you about. First is that the current model tries to monetize the outcomes by virtue of an SRAB faculty salary, and the goal here is to simply turn outcomes into dollars, so we can recommend that to the General Assembly and the Governor. That was mechanically necessary in the last version, we don't think it is anymore, and then the next slide is a segue to this, because we're able now to target the calculations to instead calculate each school's share of the total pie. We'll still calculate a total pie recommendation, and there will still be a reflection in the recommendation of outcome growth, and asking the General Assembly and the Governor for additional funding to reflect that. But the individual campuses will instead not be monetized, but instead will present them as a share of the total recommendation. What this also does is, because we used SRAB's faculty salary, and the way we used it was, it was applied differentially based on your school's Carnegie class. So we would take the UT Knoxville data from the SRAB, use it in their model, take the UT Martin data in their model. At times, that meant that when those salary multipliers, when that data moved differentially, then money, state funding moved differentially as well. Sometimes that's appropriate, but other times it was not, and again, this would further strengthen the link between the school's performance and the state funding, without that mitigating factor in this case of salary multiplier being different, or in the previous slide, without the out-of-state enrollment. So again, this more closely ties performance and state funding. So related to that is this, this last slide here, which is, removing that monetization feature allows us to talk about and, and present to you the data in terms of the share of total funding. And if you recall, from November, we, we had in our recommendations, the similar presentation, we talk about the recommendations in terms of what share of the total pie each school would get, and began to sort of move in this direction. Because we were doing this, because of that change and others, I'll use the word calibration here, and I'll try to find that as we go, but one of the challenges we always deal with, when we move from enrollment to this, and in this new iteration, is how do you have an equal and a fair starting point? And, and the technical term we use is try to calibrate the model back, where you produce an equal and fair starting point. That was, that's a, that's a heavy mathematical lift, in the last cycle, we got almost there, and didn't quite get there, and if you remember the phase-in factors from the formula, that's what they were, they were the residue of our failed efforts to calibrate. This change allows us to perfectly calibrate the model, because we're starting with everyone's current, this year, current funding levels and current share of total, and adjust from there. And so there's an equal starting point, equal playing field. So all the changes that are being proposed, everything from the minor tweaks to the outcomes, to the really significant changes to out-of-state enrollment, all that gets, I keep using the phrase baked in the cake, and my staff hates this, but it's kind of true, because it, everything sort of gets, comes out in the wash, and there's that equal starting point, where you can perfectly calibrate, and talk about, here was your share of total, current year, and here's your next year's share of total, based on your new outcome data. I probably should pause to see if there are questions about that overly technical explanation.
So that don't change.
Precisely. Well, this is key. Money will not move in the next budget cycle by virtue of any change we're recommending, exactly, but they will move by, when data changes. And that was not true last time, and that's actually, it's a subtle point, but it, and it's a technical point, but it's a really key point, and it's something that's been important, and that is a key feature of this version of the model.
Call that grandfather in that.
Thank you. What a way of saying.
Russ, may I go back and ask a question about the hours of progression from 12 to 15, to 30, 60, 90? How does, I, I know Pell defines full-time as 12, correct? What about Tennessee educational lottery system? What do they define as full-time?
Both promise and lottery will both be 12, is that, is that right? Is it right? Yeah, 12 hours.
But in fact, we, at our schools, are going to be defining it as 15.
Especially, yeah.
So, tell me, what, what's the upstream swim on that? It seems a little difficult, like, I, I don't know, how does that play out? Especially with as many students as we anticipate coming in through Tennessee promise?
Well, that, that is in part what produced our reluctance to suggest the same change at the two-year sector, going to 15, 30, and 45, because of that reality, because of that, that, that heavy lift. There's probably some more difficult realities to deal with at that sector than there are expecting that of the university sector. So really, it's easing into this and trying it out first at the four-year, where there's probably, on balance, fewer preparation issues, fewer issues of taking a full-time course load. So. load, issues that are still present quite a bit at the two-year sector. But there is, there's some, there's an expectation, I would think, that students are getting through in two years, maybe two and a half. Sometimes financial aid is not pulling in the same direction, and that's something that I think we have to wrestle with in the future.
I might add that, I mean, the national standard is 12 hours. But if you take 12 hours in a four-year institution, it's going to take you five years to graduate. So we've made moves at all of our places to encourage students to take 15 hours minimally a semester, because it's part of the formula outcome from the standpoint of matriculation. And, you know, if we stick with a 12-hour algorithm, and you are, you're encouraging, if you stick to that and encourage students to do that, you're not going to complete as many students per unit at a time, which is what we really need to do.
There's also the evidence that says that students that take 15 hours are more likely to complete at all. So anything that the campuses can do to encourage more intensity in their enrollment.
And they're likely to make more money, too. Entry-level salaries are stronger for students to complete in four years rather than five and six, sizably, yeah. Like, I think the number was $10,000 on average.
Add factor in for them.
A couple of things, that's a good question, Series. So, and this references back to the prior learning assessment conversation a little bit, because AP is sort of a subcategory of prior learning, prior credit. The model's designed to reward schools, if you were to come in already at 30 hours somehow through international baccalaureate, AP, whatever, the model will reward that school for you coming in already ahead. And then if a student were to still be on a four-year plan, take 12 hours, they would, yeah, more slowly get to those benchmarks, but they would have come in ahead and already having passed one or been closer to the first one. So it's a design to both encourage the school to accept those credits, encourage students to do so, hopefully having some connections between this policy and the master plan In the future, could we see the formula reflect a reward for people graduating early? Oh, everything's on the table, sure. You know, one of the first ideas that was ever proposed was a time-to-degree metric, whether it's based on hours or semesters, and encouraging student or schools to get students through quicker, so that's a possibility. And we're sometimes hesitant to get into the how, if a student or a school is able to produce a degree, whether it's four, four and a half, five, as long, I mean, the incentive is there to get them through fast now, quicker, so they can turn their attention and resources to other students. So it's an implicit incentive, and sometimes we wrestle with whether we ought to explicitly incentivize something or let the overall incentive structure work towards that. But it is an idea that's on the table, the one that we all think about.
There are incentives to graduate students early, right? Because it's just a simple degree, on the tuition side, and the simple degree production side of the institution goes up, the faster you can get you all out the door and in the workforce. So, I mean, there's already an incentive to say, if we can graduate a student in three, so much the better.
Yeah, I agree, and I think it's something we really need to discuss, just because it seems it's become sort of popular, at least with the people I know. You know, I myself graduated with 15 hours of credit, so there's a lot of people doing that.
Just wanted to offer one perspective on Ms. Cohen's comment that got us into this. In our discussions, there was, I felt at times, we struggled with the line between this policy, which is setting a checkpoint at which an institution will begin to be, I hate to use this word, but just for clarity, reimbursed, or, you know, get a chit for a student going that far. It's not, so that's, that's the policy message we want to send. It doesn't mean that any student who takes, doesn't take 15 hours is anyway going to lose financial aid, or it, that's a separate. And quite frankly, I would argue that through the, over time, sort of building up layer and layer and layer of 12-hour policies on top of each other, it kind of has led to where we are now, to where that's sort of the accepted standard, and we're trying to militate against that a little bit. So that's all I wanted to say.
Well, we would allow both characteristics to emerge and to be rewarded. There is a lot of overlap, a lot of correlation between the two. In fact, Stephen behind me may know some numbers off the top of his head about this, but there is a tremendous correlation between the two. And trying to, trying to reward all of them when we see them, the adult, unprepared, low-income, or if they just appear in isolation, but you're right, they emerge usually in tandem. Our slides before we get to the break here, let's see, where were we? Oh, a technical point on scales, this will resonate more, much more with institutional folks and systems folks, the scaling factors, which were designed in the model to kind of get all these outcomes comparable, where we have very disparate measurements, trying to get everything on a comparable level, so it can be mathematically compared. The scales were sort of, they were more art than science last time, now they're more science than art. And we're trying to have empirically derived scales or mathematically derived scales, which is important to just the internal workings of the model. And finally, two charts here, which, without getting too technical, this is going to, I hope, reinforce the notion that we're trying to get a correlation, a sort of almost perfect relationship between when we see changes in the performance, in the outcome data, and funding levels. And the less correlation, the less connected those two things are, the worse the policy is. The old model was correlated rather in a healthy way, and the closer you get to 1.0, it means the more they move in tandem, and we were pretty close, .91. And the new model gets us even closer, correlation of .95. And all that means in layman's terms is, there is now, in this proposal, a closer connection to performance data and state funding changes that we expect to see. And largely, it's because, again, we don't have the intervening factors of the out-of-state deduction, the salary multipliers, those things, a tighter connection between performance and funding. So just next steps, again, requesting permission from the Commission to work on some of the last few numbers and finalize some of the numbers, but the broad structure, as we've talked about, is pretty well, pretty well robust and set. And then getting some final review from all the stakeholders and using the model here for the next budget cycle in the fall. That's our next steps. Let me ask for questions while I also ask behind me, Stephen, to very quickly show you an Excel file that kind of walks through how this actually looks in practice. Questions about anything that we're suggesting or recommending to you on any of the components of the model?
The institution's pretty much put into this error.
Obviously, there isn't a drastic change as a result of the changes in the formula that help us have less heartburn about it. We're okay. I don't want to speak on.
Board of Regents is made up of a lot of institutions of different types, so to say is everybody happy with it, I think that would probably not be an accurate statement. But I do think there's a sense, there's comfort in the fact that the changes are not, are not substantial enough to really cause all the work that we've done over the last five years trying to get acclimated to this environment would be lost at all. And the tweaks, we think, are tweaks, or the adjustments are adjustments that are rational when you really consider from a state's perspective. Concern going forward, and I think it maybe comes back to David's discussion of the master plan and paragraph 20 of the master plan. The effectiveness of the revised formula as an allocation tool, I think, is enhanced. I mean, I think the changes that are made in the weighting, the scaling, and some of the other stuff that we get away from in this iteration, makes it a better mechanism to allocate. It doesn't necessarily inform very well in terms of what should the number be. I mean, what, how to allocate what we ask for is one thing, how much should we be asking for, and what is the state's share of that total ask? The formula really doesn't supply a lot of good information about that. So that's why that part of the master plan, where we bring the right people together around the table and really have a serious conversation about how we're going to fund our aspirations, gets to be a very critical part of that.
Stephen, could you quickly walk us through what's on the screen?
Yes, sir. I will be brief, because I know I stand between you guys and Snack, but to make this exciting, here's a spreadsheet. Looking at this recommendation sheet right here, this looks very similar to what we have shown you in the past, the November Commission meeting of 2014. Going down the road that Dr. Deaton just took us down, back in November, we showed you 2014-15 appropriation numbers, and then we adjusted those appropriation numbers based on the outcomes-based funding formula. But now we're going to speak in this, more of an appropriation share. We are adjusting the 14-15 appropriation share, as an example, to make a new 15-16 appropriation share. And we do that by using outcomes, fixed cost, quality assurance, that Ms. Harple went over a little earlier. And I'm not going to go in too much detail, but the formula hasn't changed significantly in the sense that we still use outcomes. Very strongly do we use outcomes, and combined outcomes that include raw outcome counts associate degrees, and add to those our focus populations with a graduated premiums of 80, 100, and 120%. Then we scale those so that we can compare workforce training to awards per 100 FTE. These are very different numbers. We use mathematically derived scales to get them back into comparison. And we weight them, as we've done in the past, based on institutional priorities, as well as, for community colleges, sector-wide priorities, where associate degrees all have 25% right here. These are very similar to what we've done in the past. We weight those outcomes, we add them up, and we get, for Chattanooga, for instance, 1,052 as weighted outcomes. This differs from the current formula in the sense that typically, right now, we would monetize these outcomes. We are not doing that. We are not monetizing these outcomes. We do something very similar with universities. We have our outcomes, we scale them, we weight them, we add them up. I'm going to use Austin Peay here as an example, not because the president is in the room, but because alphabetical order just worked out perfectly, but I'm glad you're here. Austin Peay's weighted outcomes of 3,287. We're not monetizing, we're moving on to another tab here. You see, Austin Peay is right up here, 3,287. That column is each institution's weighted outcome total. Now we do what we did in the current model and add fixed cost in, we add quality assurance. To do that, we have to convert fixed costs, you see right here, into points that roughly translate to the fixed cost share that that institution brings. I won't go into too much detail there, but this is very similar to what we've done in the current model. We then take in quality assurance. An institution right now can earn up to 5.45% of their overall formula if they score a perfect 100. Well, we take the quality assurance scores we received from Ms. Harple's office, and we convert those points, those scores, into points. And we then add up the weighted outcome points, the fixed cost points, and the quality assurance points, and we get to this number right here, for Austin Peay's 3,849. What is important going forward for 2015-16 to adjust 2015-16's share of appropriations is how does that number right there compare to what happened in 2014-15? And I hid from view here, so it wouldn't be confusing. In 2014-15, Austin Peay had 3,700 in points. That is an increase of 4.57%. ETSU right here had a 2.23% increase. We have down here, University of Memphis, 1.37%, and we calculate these for all of our institutions. Going back to Austin Peay, that 4.57% is then used to adjust Austin Peay's appropriation share from 4.44% to 4.58%. We then take our overall recommendation level for appropriations, which last year, sorry, for 15-16, was $798 million. And then we divvy that up by institution based on that appropriation share. So Austin Peay, and this current, this new proposed model, would receive $36.5 million, which is exactly 4.58% of that total $798 million that we showed. As we're starting from the same point at 2014-15, we are not building up a new 2014-15. We are not needing to phase in this new model. We are comparing growth and new outcomes and new definition of outcomes to growth in those same outcomes and definition of outcomes. And that's why it's perfectly calibrated.
If you could scroll down ever so slightly, columns C and E, just to be very clear, totaled up to 100, again, that's the total pie. The key now is what is in columns, those two middle ones, C and E, what is each institution's share of that total pie? And as you can see, they're moving around by hundreds of a percent, which is not trivial, it's big on an $800 million base, but that's really the name of the game now, yeah. So, again, this, everything that is on here, we're going to be sharing again with the group, the committee, the Commission itself, and finalizing in the coming weeks. But that's an overview of the structure and some of the details of the funding formula.
Any real questions before we? Is 10 minutes okay with everyone? Okay, take a 10-minute break.
Thank you, and again, good afternoon. There are five new academic programs that are on today's agenda, and all of these programs have been vetted through an approval process that requires intensive work from faculty and administrators, both at ETSU and UT Chattanooga, as well as governing board, staff, and where appropriate, there were site visits that were conducted by external reviewers. All programs have met the program feasibility requirements as it relates to their mission, program need, as well as resource availability. Lastly, all of the programs have been approved by both TBR and/or UT at their June board meeting. And I'll go through these programs one by one. The first program on today's agenda is the Pharmacy Studies Baccalaureate of Science at ETSU. This proposed program is a 120-hour program through which students who enter the doctor-pharmacy program without an undergraduate degree can earn a BS degree while also working towards the terminal PharmD degree. With limited exception, entry into a pharmacy program in the United States does not require completion of a bachelor's degree. Admissions into the ETSU Pharmacy School does require 61 hours. The majority of these hours can be completed as part of the student's general education curriculum. The remaining hours reflect science courses in the first academic year of the pharmacy curriculum. Currently, students who enter pharmacy school without a degree are not recognized for their academic achievement until six years at a minimum after beginning college. The proposed BS in Pharmacy Studies will remedy this and will enhance students' educational opportunities, such as the Joint Degree Program, through which pharmacy students can also earn an MBA or even the Masters of Public Health. Currently, a bachelor's degree is required to be admitted to these joint degree programs. This program also aligns very well with CCTA, since this degree is a completion degree en route to the PharmD. Since these courses currently exist within the existing structure, especially in the first-year curriculum of the PharmD program, the external reviewer requirement was waived. This program will be implemented within existing resources and will be recommended for consent agenda for tomorrow. Other questions? The next program is the Global Sport Leadership Program, and this one is also being proposed at ETSU. at ETSU. And this program is a 60-credit-hour online executive program. The goal of this interdisciplinary program is to enhance the skills and careers of sports practitioners by drawing on best practices worldwide in the area of sport leadership. The Global Sport Leadership Program will complement the existing academic programs with a focus on sports, as well as benefit from ETSU's Olympic Training Site. The program is very timely as it responds to the NCAA changes regarding a decision-making authority for institutions in the five large athletic conferences. Students will be taking courses from faculty in the Colleges of Arts and Science, as well as Education, as well as high-profile sport leaders. Students will also participate in international and travel experiences to study the impact of sports leadership and culture. The funding for this entrepreneurial program will be managed through the Center for Global Sport Leadership, and this center will sponsor conferences and establish partnerships with industry. Currently, three partners have already committed over $50,000 for program implementation. This distinctive program will benefit from the unique collaboration between the College of Graduate Studies, who will provide administrative oversight. And by this being an online program, ETSU has a very strong online education department, as well as the athletic department. Both the external reviewers, there was one from University of Florida and University of Kansas, they endorsed the program and identify program strengths such as potential market, the faculty buy-in across the various disciplines, as well as the technology resources to assist the needs of the students. And we'll be recommending this for consent agenda as well. Are there questions regarding ETSU's Global Sport Leadership EDD program? Next program is also at ETSU. And per the THEC new academic program approval policy, commission approval is required for all graduate certificate programs that are over 24 hours. And these four proposed post-doctor of nursing practice graduate certificates will offer the opportunity for DMPs to earn national certification in one of those three specializations that are on the screen, or in executive leadership. The certificate programs will range anywhere from 36 to 40 hours, depending on the certification. These certificate programs will be available to individuals who have already earned the DMP with another concentration, or to students who are currently enrolled in a DMP program but with a different declared concentration, but they must have already completed the prerequisites. An increase in the number of DMP graduates with a second or subsequent area of specialization will facilitate improved health outcomes for Tennesseeans. Since these concentrations are within the existing structure of this accredited DMP program at ETSU, the external reviewer requirement was also waived. ETSU already offers the DMP with these four concentrations. And these programs will be implemented within existing resources. Are there questions regarding these post-DMP graduate certificates? Yes?
Betty, do any of those specializations...
All of these do require clinical hours, and for all of these specializations, they require a minimum 500 clinical hours. Next program is the Master of Social Work Program at UT Chattanooga. And this will complement the other programs in the state by providing a niche for working adults seeking advanced social work training to meet the needs of the aging adult. The program will be delivered as a hybrid evening program and can be completed in one to two years, depending on the level of prior education and experience of the student. Students with a Bachelor of Social Work degree can enter the program as advanced standing and complete a 36-hour program, whereas students with undergraduate degrees from other fields must complete a 60-hour program, and they must do an additional 400 hours of field placement. So those are the two distinctions. The program builds upon an already accredited undergraduate program and existing faculty expertise. But in order for this Masters of Social Work program to meet accreditation requirements, three additional faculty members will need to be hired. And in preparing for this academic program, the faculty did engage in two needs assessments, as well as the external reviewer. And the reviewer concluded that the proposed program has a solid foundation and provides an affordable, as well as an accessible, program for working adults. Are there questions regarding the MSW at the University of Tennessee Chattanooga? And the final program for approval are the Interior Design Programs at UT Chattanooga. They have developed these two graduate program options in response to a renewed interest in the interior design field. The demand for interior design is expected to increase by 13 percent over the next 10 years. There also exists a need to add interior design faculty so that students will gain the necessary skills and knowledge in this field. The Master of Science program will prepare design practitioners in the specialized area of urban revalidization. And then students in the Master of Interior Design, the MID, will also be prepared in this area, but they will take additional coursework in applied research and college teaching. And the MID program has gathered support nationwide and being designated as a terminal degree for this academic preparation, very much like the Master of Architect. These programs will also build upon a strong accredited interior design undergraduate program with faculty expertise, and they have very good community partnerships, also with nonprofits. And the external reviewer from Florida State University noted that the community partnerships was really one of the strengths to really provide students with experiences that would be anchored in real-world design application. And the program is scheduled for students to be admitted for fall 2016, but they're planning to use the 2015-16 as their planning year, which will allow them to begin the hiring process for their first new faculty positions. And also, this time will be utilized to renovate studio space for those incoming students. Are there questions regarding the Master of Science and the Master of Interior Design at UT Chattanooga?
Ask Betty a question a moment about program review and how we evaluate the productivity of the programs and whether they're successful or not. So as you're gathering your thoughts on that, two points, as Betty said, these are recommended for tomorrow's consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, so up to the commission, but that'd be our recommendation to place them on that agenda. And also, and really this is, I guess, for David and Siri's benefit, by statute, we're charged with approving academic, new academic programs, and a lot of intensive work goes into these from the campus, the system, and with Betty and her staff before they get to this point. But this is the last stop in that approval process as directed by statute. Betty, can you comment on the program review process?
Yes, I will. Dr. Deaton, as it relates, once these programs are approved and implemented on campus, then they go into what we call our post-approval monitoring process. And per our academic policy, all of the pre-baccalaureate and the baccalaureate programs are monitored from anywhere from three to five years. And our doctoral programs are monitored for seven years. And we base this based on what the campuses have submitted in their approved budget, as well as their enrollment projections and their graduation projections. And so they are monitored very closely, and we report on that to the commission every January. So you will be hearing about these programs if they are approved. These five new programs will come up for monitoring in January 2017, I believe, if I have the orders just right. And once these programs complete their monitoring process, then they will fall into the quality assurance funding model, where they will be, for those accredited programs such as social work and all the other programs, will go through a program evaluation or academic audit. So there is constant and continuous monitoring of the programs.
Next, we will call Dr. Stephanie Bellar-Chase.
Oh, Dr. Deaton, from the commission, good afternoon. I have one informational item for you today and one action item. I'll do the action item first. If you look in your books under section 1C1 and 1C2, there's seven institutions listed in 1C1 and 56 programs listed in 1C2. Those have been recommended by the Committee on Post-Secondary Educational Institutions for initial approval and for temporary authorization and approval. Are there any questions on those institutions or programs? Okay. For the informational item, I will be going over SARAH. That is the acronym, and it's known as the State Authorization Reciprocity Agreement for Distance Education. This is a national endeavor that is going on right now, and I'm going to talk about how it came about nationally and how it came about in Tennessee. And Julie will talk about the goals, the principles, and the benefits of SARAH, and give you an update where we are with institutional participation in Tennessee. So in 2010, the United States Department of Education promulgated regulations related to the need for state authorization. So, you know, our regulations have been in place since 1974, the Post-Secondary Education Act of 1974. And if any out-of-state entity came into Tennessee, by statute, they were, they had to get authorization from the commission. And so a lot of states had very similar regulations, but it was never directly tied to whether you got Title IV funding or not. So in 2010, when these rules came about, a lot of public institutions and private tycoon-type institutions realized, oh, we've been operating in these states, and now we have to get authorization from each entity, just like THEC in Georgia, Alabama, and North Carolina. So that's basically where SARAH came from, is that when the connection between getting Title IV funds and being authorized in every state that you're in came about. And so it's an agreement among member states, districts, and territories that establishes comparable national standards for interstate offering of post-secondary distance education courses and programs. So it started with the Lumina Foundation provided funding to the President's Forum, and they worked with the Council of State Governments to develop a model state authorization reciprocity agreement. Once they developed that, then the Western Interstate Commission for Higher Education, known as WICHE, in collaboration with the regional higher education compacts, SBR, MHEC, and MBEC, all came together and they took it another step. And then after that, the Commission on the Regulation of Post-Secondary Distance Education, founded by SHIO and APLU, and chaired by the former Secretary of Education, Richard Wiley, issued a report. And basically, out of that report came SARAH. And once this report came out, then Lumina, I think it was a $2.2 million grant that they gave to start the actual implementation of SARAH. So in Tennessee, how it came about, Public Chapter 444, which was sponsored by Senate Education Chairman Dolores Gresham and House Administrative and Planning Committee Chairman Harry Brooks, enabled Tennessee's participation in SARAH. It was passed by the General Assembly on April 22 of this year, and Governor Haslam signed the legislation into law on May 18. On June 23, SREB's SARAH Steering Committee voted to approve our application to become a member of SARAH. The effective date of the decision was June 29, 2015, and so Tennessee became the 27th state to join SARAH and the sixth SREB state.
Good afternoon. I hope you enjoyed your snack. We're going to talk just a few minutes about the goals of SARAH. Generally, SARAH was designed to make state authorization more efficient, more uniform, to provide some consistency between all the different state regulations and requirements for state authorization throughout the nation. Its focus was to be more effective in dealing with quality and integrity issues that have arisen since some online distance education, in some online distance education offerings. And that comes about within SARAH, there is a requirement that any institution that participate in SARAH agreed to abide by the C-RAT guidelines, which are the interregional guideline for the evaluation of distance education, and they're pretty extensive. So that brought a level of uniformity that had not previously existed with regard to distance education, particularly online distance education. And generally, the thought of SARAH was to make state authorization less costly for the state so that an institution in Tennessee would not have to go to every single state, territory, and district and seek authorization in those specific jurisdictions, and they would save money that way. So just generally here, Dr. Bellar-Chase mentioned the regional compacts. This gives you an overview. You've got WICHE, MHEC, NEBI in the Northeast, and then SREB, which is our region. You can see New Jersey and Pennsylvania, I think, there, and New York. They did not belong to any regional compact at the time SARAH came about. So there were certain qualifications made for them. They got to pick who they were going to go to, if I remember correctly. So I don't know if they've made those decisions yet, but that was an issue that they had to deal with. So the essential principles for SARAH, number one is it's voluntary. So it's voluntary for both the states and the institutions. A state is not required to participate in SARAH, nor are that state's institutions required to participate in SARAH. SARAH acknowledges the accountability triad, so I'm not sure how familiar you might be with that term. It's used a lot in the regulatory environment, but the idea being the triad involves the state, the federal government, particularly federal student aid, and then also all the accreditors, both regional and national. So the framework for SARAH is a state-level reciprocity. However, it is implemented through the four regional educational boards we mentioned, and there is a national council referred to as NC-SARAH that oversees kind of a comprehensive national framework. And then they also have a financial plan that supports the whole operation, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. SARAH requires states to approve their in-state institutions for SARAH participation. So as we mentioned, Tennessee became a participant in SARAH, I'm sorry, a member of SARAH. States are members, institutions are participants. So Tennessee became a member of SARAH just late last month. We've already begun accepting some applications, and I can tell you where we are on that in just a moment. But we're required, Tennessee, THEC serves as the portal agency, so THEC is required to review those applications and approve or deny those applications. It's based generally on accreditation and financial stability, an agreement that THEC would work with student complaints and some other affirmations, for example, the C-RAT guidelines once again. SARAH is open to degree-granting post-secondary institutions from all sectors, public, private, for-profit, not-for-profit, regionally and nationally accredited institutions. It sets forth a reasonable, uniform set of triggers of physical presence. And for those of you who are not familiar with that term, physical presence is generally the terminology used in the different states to denote when an institution has to seek authorization in that state. So if an institution is creating, let's say, an out-of-state institution, that's the way to think of it, if an out-of-state institution is creating a physical presence in Tennessee, then that institution has to be authorized in Tennessee. If that institution's home state is a part of SARAH, Tennessee is a part of SARAH. Generally, unless they're outside of the SARAH definition of physical presence, they are not going to have to seek specific authorization in Tennessee. That's the reciprocity. Okay? Let's see. It also preserves state approval and oversight of on-ground campus activities in Tennessee. So if an institution comes to Tennessee and builds a brick-and-mortar So if an institution comes to Tennessee and builds a brick and mortar here, they still have to be authorized under our general regulatory scheme, which is the Post-Secondary Education Authorization Act of 1974. SARAH shifts principal oversight responsibilities from the state in which the distance education is being received to the home state. The best example here is University of Phoenix. So University of Phoenix has on-ground campuses here in Tennessee, and those campuses will remain regulated by Tennessee Higher Education Commission. They also have, their big online entity is based out of Phoenix, Arizona. So for purposes of SARAH, Arizona is their home state, and Arizona is responsible to approve them as a SARAH member institution. Arizona is part of SARAH, and University of Phoenix is an approved participant in SARAH. So that will shift to, from us to Arizona. Okay. As Dr. Beller Chase mentioned, the initial funding from Lumina Foundation came from Lumina, and then there's eventual, the plan is that NC-SARAH will be self-funded through the fees paid by the institutions to NC-SARAH. Tennessee as a state does not pay any fees. Okay. Very quickly, we'll talk about some of the benefits. There's benefits to students, there's benefit to institutions, there's benefits to states, so everybody wins with SARAH. So the benefits to students expands access to educational offerings. This is also a benefit to the state, right? Our students will have more institutions to choose from and maybe a variety, more, a better variety of programs. There should be a better resolution of complaints from students in SARAH states. This is a little bit questionable for us. Tennessee already had a very good complaint process, we feel, for our regulated institutions, but that was not true in every state. So this certainly does rise the level of complaint resolution in those states. Reduces a rapidly growing institutional cost that is generally passed along to the students. So if you have to pay $100,000 to get authorization in 50 states, you're going to pass that along to your students. If now you only have to pay $12,000, it's less money, less cost to pass on to the students and their tuition. And generally, the idea from NC-SARAH's perspective is that it should enhance overall quality of distance education. Once again, everybody using a uniform set of guidelines. Okay. Benefits to the institution enables more efficient provision of distance education to a broader market, so our in-state institutions can more easily go outside of Tennessee and seek students from those states. Reduces the number of applications to other states. You file one SARAH application. Right now, there are 27 SARAH states. Tennessee is the 27th. So those are, that's 20, not including Tennessee, 26 states you do not have to file separate applications with. Reduces number of other state regulations to monitor for changes. You no longer have to track 26 states' regulations. You're tracking SARAH. That's it. Reduces costs, we spoke about that, and then potentially lower fees to students. That, too, a benefit to the students. Benefits to the states. Expand educational offerings, we talked about that for the students. Allow SARAH states to focus on their home state institutions rather than us worrying about University of Phoenix's online programs. We're worrying more about what's going on in our state and what is being offered and disseminated from our state. Maintains the regulation of our on-ground institutions. It should help to resolve complaints. And if we have a University of Phoenix student who's a Tennessean and has a complaint with the online campus, we plan to work together with Arizona. We currently work very well with Arizona and many of the other states, and we have those connections already. So this will allow us to work with them in a different way. Once again, it'll reduce their costs, and then there's no fee charged to the states. As I mentioned, the fee is paid by the institution to SARAH. This is probably hard to read, but you can maybe get a little better look at it with your magnifying glass at your desk. But this is just a breakdown of all the different states and kind of where they are. The next few slides, it's a little bit easier. So the states in blue, where you see Tennessee is blue, are states that have been approved as SARAH states. You notice the SREB region is a little white compared to the rest of the country, particularly the WICHE area in the West. The primary reason for that is the Western states were very motivated to engage in SARAH as soon as they could. SREB was a little bit slower. There are different reasons for that, but it's definitely apparent in the map. That is changing, though. So right now, the green is where legislation has either passed to allow for the state to enter SARAH, or that the state has told NC-SARAH that it's not applicable in their particular state. So whether they'll come on board without legislation is yet to be seen. And this data is as of July 8, and I would like to thank SARAH, NC-SARAH, because they did provide us all these slides with the most up-to-date information. Okay. And then this last one shows in gray where legislation has been introduced. The idea being that if it's introduced, it's going to pass and they'll be part of SARAH very soon. Okay. So just very quickly, as of July 8, there were 27 SARAH states, and we mentioned the additional, the legislation in nine states, or that no states, no legislation is needed in seven. That link there will take you to the NC-SARAH site where they are continually updating that map and the approved institutions. There's a lot of information there. This is just a very quick pictorial representation of the process. As we mentioned, the state applies to SARAH to become a member. We have done that. Then institutions apply to the portal agency to become participants. Once the portal agency approves it, then we let NC-SARAH know that. We let the institution know that. In a perfect world, the institutions access the NC-SARAH website, and you see WICHE there, because WICHE does do a lot of the financial, handles a lot of the financial things for NC-SARAH at this point in time. They have a very close relationship. So the institution accesses the link, they send a payment, NC-SARAH confirms the payment, puts them on the NC-SARAH website. They are officially an NC-SARAH or a SARAH participating institution, and then that participation has to be renewed annually. So here we are today. The following applications were approved by THEC as of July 16, 2015. You can read that. There were three public institutions and nine Takuah member institutions. We have had a little hiccup with our link when some institutions tried to access it. It didn't work so well, but NC-SARAH is working on that. But we do expect all of these institutions to be listed on the NC-SARAH website very soon. Let's see. The following applications are being reviewed, and just as an update today, thanks to someone who left a big folder on my desk, and then Claude brought in one, too. So thank you for that. There are a total of 11 public institutions that had filed their applications, two Takuah members, and then we have two of our Part 20, which is the Post-Secondary Education Authorization Act institutions. And then we have one institution that I have as exempt institutions. I kind of call them the ghost sector sometimes, but it's an institution that is exempt but is not part of Takuah. So this is where we are right now, and these are the institutions we'll be reviewing. So for more information, you're welcome to call me. My number's up there. Stephanie, you can definitely call her, and also give a look at the NC-SARAH website. It has a lot of information. It has a lot of FAQs. It has all their standards and policies. But we're still working our way through it, and I hope we can answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Chairman, can I make a couple of comments? And the SARAH update is just an updated information. I want to note, Dr. Beller Chase's first presentation is an action item, recommending consent for that as well. You know, SARAH is so recent, and it's such a lot of work that went into this, and so thanks to all the staff who helped make this happen. And it's the best representation that one of y'all developed to how to describe this was the passport idea, which is that, you know, we're now recognized, states are recognizing each other's passports as they authorize a home, a domicile institution, and other states will recognize that, which, and as Julie said, I'm just trying to repeat what you said, but it allows then Phoenix, who's headquartered in Arizona, if they have Tennesseans who they serve, we now, they don't have to seek authorization here, we basically recognize that passport. Conversely, if one of Takuah schools or a public school has an online program that has students from all 49 other states, rather than that school seeking authorization through 49 other states, they get approved through our application, take that passport, and can operate. And so it really does reduce a lot of friction, regulatory friction, a lot of administrative friction. It really is a well-designed, state-led effort, at least to my judgment. So it's a good thing. So, yeah.
Next, Crystal Collins with the operating budgets.
While Crystal's getting up and ready, this is also going to be staff's suggested consent agenda for tomorrow's meeting.
Russ stole my lead. So, good afternoon, members of the Commission, Chairman Koch, Dr. Deaton. You have made it this far into the program, and as your reward, you now get to look at financial things. So I apologize ahead of time. We present operating budgets twice a year to the Commission for, as Russ said, action, and then those budgets are then presented to FNA. This is the proposed operating budgets for 1516, so these are what the campuses are thinking are going to happen in the next fiscal year. And we're going to start with a brief discussion of what did happen in the budget and the capital cycle that just ended this spring through the legislature. Firstly, the total recurring budget for 1516 for all of higher education is going to be $1.28 billion. This accounts for about a $67.4 million increase from 1415. Good news is it includes everything we asked the state for back in November, so the legislature heard your pleas and responded. So we've got our $25.7 million for the formula units, $10.6 million for non-formula units. And we also received some additional recurring dollars, including almost $20 million for salary increase for higher education employees, about $4 million for insurance, and then about $3 million of recurring funding for initiatives that have to do with the Drive to 55. And this includes this $2.5 million here for the sales program, which we've talked about before, but just as a reminder, is the seamless alignment of integrated learning supports program, and that is for students who are identified in high school, who are in need of remediation, to have that taken care of before they enter college. And it's a partnership between our K-12 institutions and our community colleges. We also received about $1 million for some adult learner initiatives, which I believe Jessica will talk about tomorrow, more than likely, maybe today, depending on how quickly I talk, apparently. So, as well, we also received some non-recurring funding, about $1.45 million for some of these adult learner initiatives, about $1 million to help veterans return to education and retool or receive a degree, and then about $550,000 for some community college initiatives, including the Tennessee Promise Bridge Program, which you may hear about tomorrow as part of the report from the Drive to 55 Office. We also received about $1.5 million for a pilot of Tennessee Reconnect for adults pursuing the AAS at the community colleges. So this is, this would be an expansion of that program if that goes well. This is just a brief review of the capital projects that were approved by the legislature. We got almost $178 million to fund eight capital project, capital outlay projects. This includes the six projects that we requested as a commission back in November, four at TBR, two at UT, as well as two additional projects, one for each system. Those additional projects, one is at the UT Space Institute for their aerodynamics lab, and then one at TBR for equipment at the TCATS to help grow those programs and meet workforce needs. We also are going to receive about $55.5 million for 34 capital maintenance projects. Well, we asked for a lot more than that. We always do. We have a pretty significant backlog of deferred maintenance and needs on campuses. And while this number is lower than what we asked for, the state does continue to make a concerted effort to invest in these projects, and we're very thankful for that. A lot of states in the U.S. do not actually have dedicated capital maintenance funds that are funded by their legislature, so we're very thankful for that money. And then also, institutions disclose projects that total about $380 million. And basically, what that means are these are projects that institutions might bring forward that they will pay for themselves through either fundraising, grants, or maybe some reserve, reserve funds. So, looking at university revenue, all of this information is available in your binder. I believe it's 1G. These are tables, I'm going to talk very briefly about information that is included in Tables 3 and 4. We talk about this every year. For those of you who've been here, this will look familiar, these graphs will look familiar. Basically, what this is looking at is the way that the revenue mixture has changed at our institutions over the last 10 or so years. And what you'll notice immediately is how those red bars are getting smaller, or have gotten smaller over the last five to 10 years. And those red bars represent state appropriations, so the revenue mixture for state appropriations at our, in this case, the university sector. We all know about the Great Recession that happened towards the end of the aughts, and, you know, our institutions began to feel that pain as, as the state wasn't able to invest as much money for, for them to operate. The good news is, we appear to have arrested that movement. We've managed to maybe plateau so that our tuition and fee levels at universities, it accounts for about 63% or 2/3 of, of total revenue, and then the state appropriation is about 30%.
Sales and service.
Yes. Great question. So this is actually due to a definitional change at TBR. So rather than money actually moving, yes, rather than money actually moving between those two sectors, they had an audit that they went through for the 1314 cycle and discovered that they were miscategorizing some of the, the, the sales and service identified projects. And that, sales and service includes like revenue from, from property you may own or intellectual property that you discover, so it's research-related a lot of times. And they found that that probably should have been in the other category, and so that's all that is. That's not actually growth in that revenue area. Similar slide here for community colleges. You'll notice there really isn't a sales and service section here. Community colleges aren't really in the business of intellectual property, or they're, you know, they're not really doing a lot of research on campus. They don't own a lot of properties that are being rented or have revenue streams that way. Here, you can also see, you know, the divestment by the state. It's not as severe as it was at the universities. I believe the community colleges now project about 57% of their revenue is going to be from tuition and fees, while about 41% is going to be from state appropriations, so about 10% higher than the universities. But again, we, we seem to see a leveling off. Our, our hope is always that we can reverse this trend at all of our institutions. That's our hope, that the state is able to reinvest in higher education since it is so important. But I think our institutions have done a really good job of, of working with, with what they've been given. To that point, expenditures. This is a look at how universities project they're going to spend their money in 1516. What's most important to us are the bottom four colored bars in each year here, so the purple, green, red, and blue. And this is what we refer to as the teaching function. So these are the categories that are most directly attached to students. And you'll notice that, you know, over the last 10 years, even though we saw that divestment from the state, institutions are still focusing the majority of their expenditures on the student. What I would like to point out is, this is the first year of 1516 where we're projecting that that teaching function is actually going to fall below 60%. And that was worrisome to me because 10 years ago, you know, we were 62%, and if we're seeing, you know, a decline, we want to, you know, know why that is. Well, interestingly, it appears that that growth has moved towards scholarships and fellowships. So that is money that is going to students. It's just not necessarily considered as part of instruction, research, or public service. So that, that falls into that other category. If we continue to see this growth, we're probably going to break that out so that it will have its own bar, so that we can see that growth. In the last 10 years, this category at universities has gone from about 5.3% of overall expenditures to about 7.8, so almost 8%. So it's a pretty interesting change. We've also seen a similar situation at community colleges. They're still right at about 60% for their expenditures on the teaching function. You will notice there's no research here. Again, community colleges aren't in the business of research. They're also investing more money in scholarship and fellowships. I would assume it's just scholarships for community colleges. They've more than doubled that in the last 10 years. It was a small base to begin with, about 1%, and now they're about 2 and 1/2. It'll be interesting to see how this changes as Tennessee Promise comes. And so when you see the graphs again in January, they might look a little different. Any questions on this before I move on to tuition and fees? Okay. What everybody cares about. So, these are the tuition and fee rates, for the average tuition and fee rates for universities, community colleges, and the TCATs, looking back 10 years, five years last year, and then this coming academic year. And then we have the average changes there at the bottom. Focusing on that right now, so universities are projecting a 4.5% change from last year, community colleges 3.2, the Tennessee Colleges of Applied Technology 3.8. The interesting thing here, two interesting things, all three of these are well below the average for the last five years and the last 10 years, which is wonderful. Also, all three of these are within the range of what we recommended back in November for increases at institutions. We did a 0 to 4%. And that 4.5% at universities, we'll talk about in just a second, why it's a little bit higher. Yes?
Do you know how these compare to national changes?
I don't know how they compare to national changes for 1516, because states haven't released their data yet. As far as peer for last year, we rank lower than most of our peer institutions for many of our campuses. Some of our campuses are above their peer institutions.
Lower, and the increase is lower, or?
Well, so the increase would have been a 1314 to 1415 increase, and I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but as 1516 data is released, we'll be able to compare those. We have to, there's not a place where centralized, up-to-date tuition and fee information is available. Most of the national organizations that reported are always a year behind, they're just now reporting 1415.
The reason I ask is, if we're competitive in fees to nationally, that would suggest that people from other states would come to Tennessee for an education. That might be something...
I know regionally, we're about the average. So if, you know, Dr. Bella Chase and Julie were both talking earlier about SRAB, that's our, those are our regional peers. Regionally, we're about average by Carnegie classification. Compared to other regions, yes, the South is lower than other regions in pretty much every measure. It's just cheaper to go to school here. And we do still remain a good buy, even with these increases over the last several years. Anything else before we move on? So this is what the university rates look like. And, again, 10 years, five years last year, this year. Of interest here, I'm just going to point out a couple institutions. Austin Peay and ETSU, their changes are due to increases in mandatory fees. Austin Peay had an increase in their athletics fee, ETSU had an increase in their debt services fee. That's why they're above what was recommended, the 0 to 4%. Their maintenance fee, what we call tuition in layman's terms, what they call maintenance fees, was right at 3%. So they did follow the suggestions and guidelines. Tennessee Tech has done something very interesting this year. They've actually repurposed a lot of their mandatory fees into their maintenance fees. And so they got rid of a few fees, they moved some over, and then they did the 3% increase. So if you were to look at the fee table that's in your printout, that's in your book, I think it's Table 5, theirs looks really interesting. They have a 22% decline in mandatory fees and a 10.5% increase in maintenance fees. And that's just because they repurposed or retooled some of those fees and made them maintenance fees. And then, lastly, the UT Knoxville, we've talked about this before as well, beginning in the fall of 2013, Knoxville moved to a flat rate for 15 hours rather than 12. What that meant was that was graduated in as individual new classes came in. We've now hit three of the four, only the seniors are still paying for 12 hours right now. So juniors, sophomores, and freshmen are all paying for 15 hours. That makes their average look a little wonky, because the growth is a little bit bigger. The actual change from year to year is still only 3%, but that's why their number is 8.6, because it's a weighted average. They dropped off a low year, they've added a higher rate. And so this time next year, they'll probably be at 3%, because that's what they've been doing, so.
Well, you know, that was also an incentive, this standpoint of completion agenda, because it was, program was termed 15 and 4, take 15 hours and graduate in four years. Also, Knoxville also guaranteed a student an increase that wouldn't be below over that three-year timeframe, 3% per year, timeframe where often the six or eight are at. But if you do not complete in four years, the clock is reset to whatever the new maintenance fee amount is. So there's an incentive, two ways, to complete more closely on time and in four years.
It's an interesting policy choice. We're interested to see if other universities implement it and see how differentiated fees are applied at other campuses. Interesting way of motivating students to complete. And that's, yes?
Can I ask a very quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Four years to find an eight semesters, 2015?
Calendar year. If you go to summer school, it really doesn't count against you.
I just wondered.
In fact, a lot of people think you ought to try to expand capacity in the summer, but, you know, having gone around and said now with students at our various campuses, there's a litany of reasons why they don't want to go in the summer. Some of them have to work legitimately to earn money to pay their way through school. Others just have a tradition of saying, "Summer's the time that I don't go to school," and I've done that all my life, and I don't want to do it now. Knoxville did an experiment a year or two ago where they actually incentivized summer attendance by reducing fees, and it really didn't change enrollment.
Any other questions on operating budgets? The information in your packet includes information on auxiliary and athletics, if you're interested in that. And again, this is an action item for tomorrow, but should be on the consent agenda if you approve. Thank you.
Hey, Derek.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cope, Dr. Deaton, members of the Commission. Troy Grant is apologizing that he could not be here today. He and most of our team are actually at the National Gear Up Conference this week, so I flew back, got in very late last night, so, but I'm a little bit tired. I apologize if I speak very quickly, I've had a lot of coffee today. But today, we're going to talk a little bit about, give you an update on the Gear Up Tennessee program, and then talk a little bit about the Tennessee Promise Forward Grants, which we're working with a number of community colleges on those grants, and then wrap up by talking a little bit about collegeforTN.org and the transcript exchange. We have RFPs for both of those, that I'll give you an update on. So first, I think most of you are familiar with the Gear Up Tennessee program. It is a college access program that's funded by the U.S. Department of Education and administered through the Office of P-16 Initiatives. Gear Up works with 15 counties around Tennessee, and we serve approximately 7,500 students in the class of 2018. We've been working with them since they've been in 7th grade, and they're about to be 10th graders. And we also work with 5,500 seniors across the state each year. We provide a number of services to them in these counties. It's everything from mentoring, tutoring, college visits, job site visits, and that's just really skimming the surface in terms of what we're able to offer to these students through this funding. We also are able to offer through Gear Up, the annual Gear Up Tennessee Youth Summit, which is a three-day intensive college access program that we host for a number of our cohort students during the summer. This year, we hosted it at Middle Tennessee State University. We had 160 students and 45 chaperones in attendance, most of those chaperones being teachers or counselors from those schools where the students attend. We also partnered with the Public Education Foundation of Chattanooga to provide faculty and programming for the students. And so we had faculty who were on the admissions staff and student advising staff from a number of institutions around the state, including the University of Tennessee, Middle Tennessee State University, of course, our host institution, Chattanooga State, University of Memphis. And we also had a number of different faculty members from colleges around the Southeast, which was a very positive experience for our students. Just a little bit of a highlight of some of the sessions that were available for students. We did a number of sessions on Tennessee Promise, making sure that the students were aware of Tennessee Promise and the opportunities available to them through that. Sessions on writing a college admissions essay so they can start practicing early, financial aid options, tips for how to be successful in their sophomore year, which they're entering into. We actually did a mini-conference for our students, which was a very popular thing. So students, much like in college, got to go through and pick what sessions they were interested in and choose what topics they wanted to attend. And much like any real conference, a lot of the students complained, "Well, all the sessions I wanted to go to were held right at the same time, so how do I choose?" So it was a good sort of example of, you know, making decisions about what you want to focus on, and kind of a great way to sort of teach them lessons while also giving them fantastic content. We got surveys back from the event, which were incredibly positive. The students and the chaperones all talked about what an informative experience this was, and what a positive experience this was for the students. We actually have a video, but I think for the sake of time, I'm not going to show the video here today, but we'll make sure to send that out to everyone in the next update. But it's really from the students and the chaperones and their own words about what the experience meant to them, and we've also got some great pictures from the event that you can get. A little bit of a sense of what it was like to be there, sleeping on a college campus again for two days with 160 15-year-olds, which is quite an experience in and of itself. But really was a positive event, and our students, I'd say the largest piece of feedback that we got from our students is that they want it to be longer next year. They want to be able to go back and spend even more time on a college campus, which for us was a huge sign of success. All of the chaperones were not quite as sure they wanted to extend the experience of sleeping in twin XL beds, but they also said it really was just a very informative experience for everyone. So next, we're going to talk a little bit about the Tennessee Promise Forward Grant. The Tennessee Promise Forward Grant is an opportunity that we extended to community colleges back in May. It's funded by a college access challenge grant, and the focus of the Tennessee Promise Forward Grant is to provide funds to the community colleges to work on retention, success, and graduation of Tennessee Promise students. We encourage these schools to apply for projects that focused on one of three project categories: technology and digital outreach, for example, texting platforms that would provide students with nudges to remember requirements, or to know about deadlines that are happening at the institution; proactive and personal advising, so increasing advising services for Tennessee Promise students; and also combination support services, so services that would combine the previous two areas, such as using text messaging and technology to increase advising programs or to connect advisors with students through technology. We awarded in late May, seven institutions, grants totaling $522,000, a little more than that. And these are the institutions that we funded. The grants began in June, they officially kicked off. We held a kickoff meeting for all of the institutions here in Nashville in June, and that meeting was really a fantastic opportunity for all of the campuses that are hosting the Tennessee Promise Forward Grants to come together, share what their projects are, learn from each other, and talk a little bit about how they're supporting their Tennessee Promise students. We're going to continue to have those meetings throughout the life of the grant to let the institutions learn from the best practices and the successes each other are having. The grants will conclude in August of 2016, but that's just the initial funding that will conclude. In the grant proposals, we asked all of the institutions to write in sustainability and how they plan to sustain these grants, far beyond just our initial funding. So, does anyone have any questions about the Tennessee Promise Forward Grant? All right. So next, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about collegeforTN.org. I think some of you are familiar with this. CollegeforTN.org is an online web portal which provides all Tennesseans with tools and resources that emphasize the need for higher education. They outline options available to all Tennessee students, and we really focus on facilitating that transition to higher education. We have account options for educators, for students, for parents, and we work to really connect all three of those audiences within the portal. Huge for us is that it's at absolutely no cost to our users. So students, educators, parents, this is completely free of cost to them, and that's been a very important resource for us. CollegeforTN.org was initially launched in 2005. In that time, we've had over 450,000 accounts created, students, parents, educators, and just in 2014 alone, 53,000 new accounts. We have an outreach specialist, Kate Watts, who has really done a great job of creating those relationships with schools and encouraging educators and their students to get on the site and to increase usage of the site. We are in a bit of a transition with collegeforTN.org for the past five years, and I believe before that, we've had one vendor who's actually run the platform for the website. That contract ended, or is ending this year, and so we recently did an RFP to get a new vendor in line to power collegeforTN.org. Just on Monday, in fact, we selected Graduation Alliance. We had four vendors send in proposals for the RFP, and Graduation Alliance, which is based out of Utah, I believe, won both the technical response and the pricing response. So we are planning to move forward ahead, and we will be doing a transition for collegeforTN.org. Our goal is to make that transition pretty seamless for all of our users, of course. So anyone have any questions about that? And last but not least, the electronic transcripts. This is, I think, one of our less outward-facing initiatives, but we have powered an electronic transcript exchange since 2005, which allows educators to actually transfer transcript information. And it's primarily been used for verifying lottery scholarship information, particularly among high school counselors, to verify their student's lottery scholarship information. And it's a standard way for them to send that information to TSAC, to institutions. And we've, in the past, had that contract, has also been with Zap, they just happen to be through the same company providing the same services. But again, as that contract was ending, we recently did an RFP to select a new vendor for the electronic transcript. We are actually currently in the process of waiting to receive those proposals. I believe that they're going to be due in August, and so we should have a new vendor for the transcript at some point in August. So that's upcoming, and hopefully the next commission meeting will be able to let you know who we are going with for that portion of our work. So does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. Well, I told you I was going to be quick, and there we go.
Hey, how long is the video you referred to?
The video is about five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to beg your forgiveness and ask that we see that. I am dying to see that video. It is the last item of the day, so I would really like to see that, if that's okay.
And I do voiceover on part of it, so you're welcome. You get to hear this.
This'll be entertaining.
Who's your agent?
Excuse me? Right here. But it really is a fantastic way, I think, for you to hear the students and the, let's see, the students, and we have one of the chaperones featured as well. The Gear Up Tennessee Youth Summit is an event that brings students from across the state to a college campus for three days of incredible and intensive college exploration experiences. During the youth summit, the students get to stay on a college campus for a few days, they get to learn from professionals who actually work on college campuses, many of them in admissions or student services, and they get to have a really fun set of experiences while they think about what they want out of college and how they're going to reach their goals, both in education and in life. This year was our third year hosting the Gear Up Tennessee Youth Summit. Each year, we've had incredible feedback from the students and from the chaperones and from the faculty members about what a positive experience this is for everyone involved. And we're excited that the event gets bigger and better every year.
I'm learning a lot. I really thought it was going to be, you know, kind of boring and all that, but as I've got here, I've enjoyed it, and I've learned a lot. And it's fun meeting new people and interacting with new people and playing games, and it's like you're kind of on your own, like you're in college for a week. Because like, you have to know where you're going, you have to make sure, like, you have to wake up on our own, get to where we need to be. It's a good version of the experience of college life. I learned like a whole lot about college and applying, and what you have to do to get into a good college, and actions and steps that I should take right now that I wouldn't have thought of that would actually matter. You should really like engage in Gear Up and try to get in programs to do stuff like this and try to go to the youth summit next year. It's fun, and you learn a lot. Like, you learn a lot.
This has been my first year, and it's been really, really, really good. I've learned more about college and what it takes to go to college, more than I knew. It takes motivation more than money. Money's not everything. It takes more. Very motivational when it comes to fulfilling your dreams about what you want to be or what you want to do.
My name is Daniel Williams. I'm a chaperone for Metro Nashville Public Schools, and I work at Stratford-Stem Magnet School. At the youth summit this year, my students have really learned everything they would need to know, how to get in college, how to get money for college, how to write essays to get into college. Some things I wish I would have been able to learn before I went to college. I mean, as far as what a student would say to another student about coming here and what their experience was this summer. For one, the number one experience would be, well, I went to MTSU for a free college visit. That's one. Along with making new friends, eating free food, and learning more about different colleges and how to get in them. Being a parent myself, also a chaperone, I mean, I think it's helpful for all parents to, especially ones who are, who have... to, man, especially ones who are, who have kids in high school who want to go to college, to come and just have the experience. Because, I mean, like I said, if I was a, if I was a student and I wanted to go to college and get free money and learn how to get free money and scholarships, I would come because, man, it's, it's great.
This is my third year at the youth summit. I love to come back because it gives me a chance to get out of the environment that I'm in and go to a whole nother environment and know how college is going to be like, that you're going to be with, that you're, for your first day, you're going to be with a lot of people that you don't know, and how you should talk to people and get to know them. It's been a pretty good experience. I've learned how to stand out. I've learned how to stand out amongst other college applications for the students that are applying. I should take more rigorous courses and do more activities.
I've learned that making a decision on college can depend on what you want to go into rather than, or it could be either one, whether you like the university or what you want to go into. It just all depends. It's way easier to get into college than it sounds like it is, especially if you don't have all the money in the world, you can still get in with your two free years. I was expecting to be in the classroom a lot, not get a lot of real college experience, but it's been kind of like a college experience. Gear Up gives you more opportunities than you think it does. And at the youth summit, it's probably taught me quite a lot about college in just this short little time. So I learned about college too, while I've had fun, so I could stay here forever if I wanted to.
I think there's no better ringing endorsement than a 15-year-old saying, "I could stay here forever if I, if I could." So thank you very much for allowing us to watch that and hear some of the voices of some of our Gear Up students.
That was great, thank you. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on that note, the youth summit and all the gear up programs are a function of the gear up grant. The feds don't just hand out, we compete for, and it's because of the gear up staff and others before us being entrepreneurial and seeking those grants. That's how that stuff is possible, so thanks to all that staff.
Great work. All right. Well, we are at the end of our workshop agenda, and if there are any announcements or comments from any of the other commissioners or staff, we'll entertain them now. If not, we'll adjourn and see everyone back tomorrow.
At 9:00 AM sharp.
At 9:00 AM sharp in the morning. Very good. Thanks.
So we go into morning?
Yes.